Meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission, and today is Wednesday, May the 20th. Good evening. I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Daphne West, Commission President.
James Nacita, Commissioner, and I apologize in advance for my voice tonight.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Please stand and join me in the flight booth.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we have been doing in honor of Oregon's sesquicentennial, Oregon City is having a sesquicentennial moment, which is an interesting or little-known fact about Oregon City tonight, presented by Commissioner Rocky Smith.
On May 9th, many Oregon City residents may have seen Oregon's state fair's Big Tomato as it made its way in its debut for the summer of 2009 down Main Street in Oregon City in the Teddy Bear Parade, or sitting at the entrance of the Pioneer Family Festival at Clackamas Park.
I was just glad they didn't throw it.
It was huge. It was one of the highlights of the parade, for sure. The Big Tomato will continue to visit cities and events all over Oregon throughout the summer, leading up to the state fair in Salem. It seemed fitting to have Oregon City as the debut site for Oregon's sesquicentennial year because of the importance of the local history to our city and its connection to the history of our state. In the mid-1850s, the Oregon Farmer Newspaper began calling for a state fair. A group of farmers united to start the process of developing a state fair. They called themselves the Oregon Fruit Growers Association. They had a gathering in 1858 that was considered the first unofficial Oregon State Fair. In 1860, the Fruit Growers united with the county agricultural societies to become Oregon State Agricultural Society. One of the first orders of business was to fix a date for the annual official state fair. It would begin on the second Tuesday in October and would run for four days. The State Agricultural Society then went to the state legislature in the hopes that money would be made available for the award of premiums. Despite the fact that 28 of the 50 members of the state legislature were farmers, the request was denied. Undaunted, the State Agricultural Society pressed on and hosted the first official state fair in 1861. The first Oregon State Fair was held on four acres of property along the Clackamas River in the Oregon City Gladstone area. Prizes were received. Diplomas included R.C. Greer from Waldo for fat lambs, J. Watt of Salem for the best mules, and Dr. L.S. Smith received special notice for artificial teeth displayed on a gold plate. A silk quilt was also used, or a silk quilt was also made as a gift for President Lincoln and was on display. It was just sesquicentennial moment.
Thank you. So, the first state fair was actually in Oregon City. Okay. Next, we are honored this evening to have our state senator with us, Martha Schrader. Martha, would you please come forward? Welcome. We're glad to have you here. We know you're in a hectic time of the session, but we're glad you're able to give us a little update this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Norris and members of the commission. It's nice to be here, and I think this is the first time I've been here with some of the newer commissioners, so I'm glad you're here, and I know you're doing a great job for Oregon City. And Doug, I'm not used to seeing you in clothes like that. I'm used to seeing you as Dr. John McLaughlin.
You're not used to seeing you in clothes? How are you used to seeing you?
I'm used to seeing you in a top hat and a long coat, and so what's happened with that garb tonight here? It's a bright yellow.
Actually, a friend of mine sent this to me in the mail, and I'm almost sorry I ever put it on.
Yes, a little bright yellow there, Doug, or should I say Mr. McLaughlin. Okay? In any case, pardon me?
Doctor McLaughlin.
Oh, Doctor McLaughlin, okay. In any case, I did want to give you a quick update of what is going on in Salem. There are some mixed messages here. As you know, we are in the midst of probably one of the most difficult economic climates we've faced in a long time. Ninety-four percent of Oregon's general fund pays for education, public safety, and human services, and we do have a huge shortfall facing the state, and there are going to be cuts to services this go-round, and the co-chairs are actually busily working on the budget. They took the first crack at it. It's approximately, I would say, 13 to 15 percent cuts at this point in time. We are about $4.2 billion down, so the budget will be balanced as those details are worked out with cuts, as well as looking at ways to raise revenues. One of the big pieces at this point that's on the table is looking at the corporate minimum. The co-chairs and the rest of our colleagues have been working closely with the business community, Oregon Business Association, and other folks to actually take a look at that to help generate some additional revenues for us. So, I would just say at this point in time, hold on to your seats because it's going to be a bumpy ride. We do plan to be out by the end of June, and the specific details of the budget are continually being worked on. At this point in time, we have taken a closer look at human services. We've taken a closer look at public safety, education, and then in the next few days, we'll take a closer look at things like natural resources, our general government, which is us, your legislature, and the other smaller pieces of the budget. So, working hard on that, that is going to be the driver that gets us out of the building. The principles that we have put forward to work on this budget is really to try and maintain as many appropriate services as possible to vulnerable Oregonians. Co-chair Margaret Carter, who's a wonderful human being and close friend, has said continually that we will not balance this budget on the backs of the vulnerable. So, despite the fact we will see some cuts in human services, we are trying to balance those, so it doesn't, so at least some of the core significant services will be maintained. I know, Rocky, you're a school teacher, okay? It looks as if we can maintain the school budgets at about a $6 billion level, which took some doing, but that number is on the table to at least maintain services for the school systems. I think tonight, though, let me move on to something a little more cheerful because it is a job creation piece, and it's something that is breaking as we speak, and I know that Commissioner Jarrett Peterson was down in Salem today kind of lobbying for this, and this is the transportation package. We'll have our first joint meeting of the Transportation Committee tomorrow evening. We'll also have an afternoon meeting on Friday, and we are anticipating, anticipating this package to move out of the Joint Committee on Transportation, we hope, by Tuesday. The good news for Oregon City is that we are hoping to obtain $22 million for your jug handle project. One of the reasons that project rose to the top was because we knew that in this climate it was important to prepare for recovery, and we knew that getting that piece going would open up your area down there in the Cove and that surrounding area for redevelopment. So, one of the criteria we used as we moved forward to actually, for the first time, look at specific projects was how will these projects impact long-term economic development and recovery, and your project rose to the top. I'm really very happy to say and very pleased that that happened.
Thank you for your support and work on that. We really appreciate that.
And I also want to say, and I'll let Speaker Hunt know I said this, I also think that he was instrumental in helping to move this forward, and I'll let him know that I spoke to you tonight when I see him tomorrow, and that he also deserves kudos for the hard work that he did negotiating this particular package. It's an interesting package, as I said, how we will, you know, give it to our constituency is that it is a job creation package. We did actually, again, for the first time, try to indicate what projects would move to the top. The Oregon Transportation Commission did put their stamp of approval on these projects. We wanted to be clear, at least this go-round, with our constituents what their taxpayer dollars were going to buy, and as I said, it's kind of the first time we actually designated packages in a, you know, in a package of this particular size, but we felt that it was a good opportunity to show the voters where their dollars were going and how it would actually get transportation jobs up and running, so, yeah.
Any questions? Commissioner Neely.
There are certain tax revenues that are distributed, that the state gets, that are distributed among municipalities and counties and so forth. Do you have any notion as to how those will compare coming in this next budget years to previous budget years?
Do you mean essentially the gas taxes? Actually, we're maintaining, it's the transportation package has codified the formula with those particular distributions, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I do have a sheet that actually tells what our cities would be getting and what our county will be getting, but it is the standard formula. My understanding is, I think it's the 5320, if I'm not, is it? Yeah, I think it's 5320. That's actually going to be in the bill itself and codify that that's how the distribution of the dollars is.
The revenues, are they projected to be going down in this coming year?
Oh, I would, yeah, I would say they are projected, but since you mentioned revenue, the revenue co-chairs are also looking at revenue raising options as well, and again, that would be the corporate minimum piece. There is a bill, I helped, I did actually help sponsor this one for kicker reform, but it's likely that won't happen. This go-round, the buzz in the building is potentially in February's when maybe a bill of that kind will move forward, and we also are looking at possibilities, again, the corporate minimum, and then looking at other tax pieces, particularly maybe folks who are at the very, very upper end of income, you know, seeing if there's some possibilities there as well. So, you know, we are going to try and balance the budget with revenues as well as cuts, Doug, so I hope that answers your question.
Commissioner Nacita.
Senator Schrader, a quick question on the Sunrise Corridor project. That project's been criticized in circles for possibly being an urban sprawl generator. Is that in the package? What's the situation?
I believe that is also in the package as well, but let me reframe what you said, the corridor. We actually, and I know Commissioner Peterson will back me up on this, we reframe that whole piece as a sunrise system, so it isn't just what you might perceive to be some kind of huge six-lane concrete kind of piece. It's, you're probably looking at more, you know, looking at the intersection piece, least cost design as they move forward with this, and so I would say the framework of how that package would go forward is probably slightly different than what you might be envisioning, and I know that Commissioner Peterson, I hope you're happy that we put that in there, okay, or put that in as a possibility, but think of it as a grid and a system with not only the east-to-west piece, but the north-south connectors that will open up that area.
I want to ask Commissioner Peterson if my recollection serves me right, that you once-
Will come up forward, Lynn.
-had an idea for a parkway out there.
Yes, there's a lot of stuff-
Let's introduce you.
I'm Lynn Peterson, Chair of the Clackamas County Commission.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Having worked on this project in different capacities over the last 15 years, yes, some of what's been discussed out in Damascus is kind of the second or third phase of what was proposed as the Sunrise Corridor from I-205 to Highway 26. That is really no longer an option. The city of Damascus doesn't, wants to be able to move forward without a bypass because they don't believe it'll ever get built, so they want to plan for the future that has no bypass. So, what they're looking at is making sure that they have an arterial system along with Highway 212, and that Highway 212 fits into their scheme, the existing 212. So, essentially, we have, at this point in time, we're moving forward on adoption of a supplemental draft environmental impact statement. I think it's the third in the last 20 years, but, yeah, and what it proposes in literal technical terms is an eight-lane freeway for four and a half miles with an interchange at I-205, but what we have said we're going to do is phase that project, and that's what you're going to see happen through this money in the bill, is that we are adopting a phasing strategy that actually deals with land uses in a priority order, making sure that existing land uses within the industrial district are served first so that we can decrease delay for freight, so that means the existing interchange will get redesigned. The second priority is opening up employment lands along 162nd so that Happy Valley employment lands can move forward. The last priority is Damascus commuters, because there isn't enough of them yet, and there won't be for some time, to actually justify spending $1.2 billion on a facility to serve commuters that aren't there yet.
Thank you for the explanation.
Just one last comment, too. The other reason I think that area is important in moving forward is it is our industrial area, too, so some of the intersection kinds of opportunities that we can move forward with, and actually, the county can move forward with, with our money-
Yes.
-okay, would be to make sure that area remains vital and traffic moving as well, but I'm glad the design pieces seem to be falling into place, Commissioner.
I just want to say it's an exciting time in Clackamas County because what we are actually doing is looking realistically at the types of projects that we can move forward in kind of that least-cost planning approach that Martha mentioned, but it's also practical design. What do we need now today to make the things that we want to do happen, like the jug handle to promote development down-
And McLaughlin.
Right, and McLaughlin, so that we can actually do multimodal at the same time that we're providing, we're providing capacity in many different ways, and that's the exciting part of this, is that we're able to move forward now, because before we were maybe going for a project that was beyond our means and we weren't making progress. So, now we've actually got those bite-sized chunks, and we're moving them forward, so yay.
I would like to thank both of you for changing that, the paradigm that Clackamas County, I think, had towards transportation and in looking at connectivity and a system-wide development, yeah, approach to both in the marriage of land use and transportation, so I really appreciate that new direction.
And least-cost planning is also-
And in the bill.
-is also codified in the transportation bill, so that's another good section that hopefully will be passing next week, so.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your hard work down there, and we thank you for supporting the project so important to us. Appreciate that. Next, we have Annette Matson, who's here with PGE, and someone else. Congratulations, Annette. We hear you were re-elected to the school board.
I was, thank you.
David Doug, the school district. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Norris, councilors, my name is Annette Matson. I work in Government Affairs at Portland General Electric. I'd like to introduce my coworkers who will be presenting tonight. We have Ed Feeley and Bill Mullenberg. Ed is from System Planning and Engineering. He is the project manager. Bill Mullenberg, in the brown shirt there, is the general foreman for this work and all of the infrastructure work that is handled out of the Oregon City office. He's located across the street on Warner Milney. Bill's the guy in charge of restoration, that is getting the crews out and the lines back up when a storm hits, among other duties. I want to really thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight about this major project that PGE is undertaking, and this will increase capacity and reliability of power to our customers. We've seen an ever-increasing demand for electric power supply in Clackamas County, and this project will deliver power to meet that need. With this work, PGE is also meeting a requirement from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission that all transmission service be redundant. The reconductoring of the McLaughlin-Wilsonville Transmission Line, which goes through Oregon City, has been planned for about eight years. The work is well underway, and permits have been approved. Letters notifying the approximately 600 property owners along the 11-mile transmission corridor have been mailed. Those were done on August 20th, and November 17th of last year, and on March 30th and May 15th of this year. Two of these letters were invitations to public open houses to obtain more information about the project, and these were held on September 4th and April 23rd at the Abernathy Center. Another mailing in regard to this project will be made to property owners in mid-June. Now, you probably weren't aware of this activity because, to date, the work has been very routine, and has simply involved people and trucks working along the existing transmission right-of-way. The phase of the work that Ed and Bill will be telling you about tonight, while a fairly brief phase in the timeframe, is a little bit less routine. So, to fill you in on this, this more visible phase of a complex project, and the helicopter work that'll be taking place in July of this year, here are Ed and Bill.
Thank you. Welcome. You'll have to share the microphone there.
Oh, I think we won't have any problem being heard.
Okay, good.
Hi, as Annette mentioned, my name is Ed Feeley. I'm a project manager with PGE.
Pull the mic just a little closer because you are, you have a vast television audience that doesn't want to miss a word.
Oh, okay. So, as I was saying, my name is Ed Feeley. I'm a project manager with Portland General Electric. I work in the System Planning and Engineering Group. This project, the McLaughlin-Wilsonville Reconductor Project, is a portion of a larger portfolio, if you will. Changing our 57 KV system to 115 is about a $12 million project. This transmission line is about $1.7 million of that $12 million. Let's see. I'll go ahead and start the slideshow here. The new 115 line will be installed on existing lattice structures, so these steel structures that, as you see here, the one side of it has an existing electric conductor on it, the other side is vacant, so we're taking advantage of the vacant facilities and running the new transmission line along that corridor. It's approximately 11 miles between our McLaughlin substation and Wilsonville substation. Bill's infinitely more familiar with this area as he lives here, and so if there's any questions about where this line specifically runs, street names, he can fill you in there. There is a blue line that represents that transmission line, if you can make it out. I know it's a little faint, but, and-
And the bomb there.
There it is. Okay, so there's a blue line that runs here between our, that would be the Wilsonville substation and back over here at McLaughlin Substation in Oregon City. We do have a river crossing here. As far as the timing of the work goes, we'll be starting on the Wilsonville side beginning of June and running to almost the end of June, and then Bill Mullenberg and the Oregon City line crews will be working from the McLaughlin substation going to this side of the river through July. As Annette mentioned, the justification is that we have increasing demand for power, and as the power consumption increases, we have to keep pace with our infrastructure. So, not only are we building capacity, but we're also building redundancy so that in the event of an outage, we can reroute power from different directions to minimize the impact of that outage. That's the FERC requirement, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission requirements, that all utilities build redundancy into their systems. As Annette mentioned, we've been working on this for about eight years. There's a lot of groups within PGE that work on planning a project of this nature between permitting. We start permitting at least a year in advance because of all the requirements that we have to do in order to get the permit to build these lines. Annette did mention the amount of communication that we provide. Bill Mullenberg, our general foreman, has, you know, personally talked to property owners, especially where we're going to be setting up equipment, and there, I've got pictures in here of the type of equipment that we'll be using to give you an idea. Because it's existing structures, it's a minimum footprint. It's not like we're putting new structures in the ground where we have to bring concrete trucks and drilling rigs and so on. These are existing structures, so it's usually bucket trucks of that nature. Want to add anything, Bill?
You're doing good.
Okay.
You got this down.
I don't want to get in trouble with my general foreman. I mentioned that using the existing resources, being able to take advantage of an existing right-of-way saves us money and also minimizes the environmental impact. As you can imagine, if you're trying to build a new transmission line, if you're going through wetlands or any cultural findings, historical areas, the amount of permitting and disturbance that you could have could be significant. Because this is already existing, then we don't have any of that impact. The helicopter, this is what gets the attention. All the other work is pretty mundane, and everybody pretty much ignores this when we do it, but when we have a helicopter flying down the right-of-way, it tends to get people's attention. So, and I'll let Bill explain why we would use a helicopter to build this line.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bill Mullenberg, general line foreman, Oregon City. You'll see me 24/7 out here, always out there on the front end. If you need me, just call. We use a helicopter-
And your cell phone number is?
572-8000.
Oh.
We use the helicopter to help get the ropes in as quickly as possible. It's less impact. I don't have to use heavy trucks or equipment to pull the ropes through. Currently, we're building a 10-mile line in Rainier now, and we've been using helicopters for the past month. I can pull out 15,000 feet of rope. It'd be $45,000 altogether inside an hour and a half. So, my plan is Sunday on the 12th of July, we'll have a helicopter come in. We've worked with ODOT, the river crossing and all. We plan on pulling out about seven miles of rope in that day and have that part completed, and then we'll start our pulling part, which is bringing the conductors through. It takes about, oh, it'll take a week, probably take approximately three weeks to get all the conductors in, up on the towers, and put in place. Then by August, we'll be crossing the river, heading over towards the golf course, so it's pretty fast.
Sorry, Bill. Bill mentioned that we're going to be starting on Sunday. That's a requirement because we have a highway crossing as soon as we come out of the substation, so 213, and so they've, ODOT has asked us to do that work on Sunday to minimize the impact on traffic, so that's why we're, we'll be doing this work on a Sunday.
So, that's about, you know, my part of it is pretty quick. We have a footprint of about two days at a tower, and usually the public will see my trucks come through, we'll spend a little bit of time here in this tower, go to the next tower, spend a little bit of time. It's a process like anything else. We pull the wire in, we have to go back, we sag it, tie it into the dead-end structures, and we go through and tie it on the tangent structures, and then we're done. So, it's pretty quick overall.
So, I assume you're, you are anticipating that the noise from the helicopter is going to be a bit of a disruption, so I assume you're just working during daylight hours?
Yeah, and we'll start about 9:00 in the morning, and we should have everything in place. Through here, we'll probably be a half hour at the most, come across 213, up through Oregon City proper, then over across Myers Road.
And there are rolling closure, or closures while they're working across those roads, so, yeah, and so with the road closure and helicopter overhead, may get some-
That will be an impact, okay. Appreciate that, heads up. Commissioner Nacita.
Is any of the work going to be done on the lines going in and out of the Blue Heron Plant?
No.
The question's Commissioner Neely.
When you're mentioning redundancy, with these, will both lines still carry current?
The existing will be de-energized while I'm doing my work for the next couple months, and after I get my work completed, then yes, both will be energized. One will be 230, the other side will be 115,000.
When I think of redundancy, I'm thinking that there might be some unused capacity there. Is that right or not?
I mean, we build the lines so that we can accommodate demand, not just for today, but demand into the future, because we don't want to be coming back out on an annual basis and rebuilding. So, yes, there's extra capacity that's built into that while we're doing that construction.
It's the same size conductor that's up there now. It's 1272 AAC all in the conductor. It's 1.3 inches wide and weighs about a pound and a half per foot, so there's quite a bit of capacity there.
Okay. Any further questions?
I wanted to show a slide. This is typical equipment that you would see in the right-of-way. On the left-hand side, there's a PGE bucket truck. Bill, you should be explaining this stuff.
Now, is Annette going, is Annette going to be up there doing some of that work?
Well, of course, absolutely.
These are, these are typical line, in fact, this is the line we worked on last year, going from Carver to McLaughlin Sub, going across Forsyth Road, across the Clackamas River. Now, I talk to my customers along the right-of-way, try to explain to them, since most of them aren't familiar with line work, you gotta imagine a school bus in your backyard. That's about the size of my equipment, sometimes two, so we do have to build access points to be able to get in there, and then after we're done, we take them back, send our landscape crews back- done, we take them back, send our landscape crews back through, and try to build it better than when we were there. So the customers are talked to all along the way. If anybody's been out and about, we put signs out last year in all our major egress points with a phone number there that's connected to our hotline. And that phone number goes directly downtown, it's monitored, and any phone calls that we do get from the public come right to me, then I go talk to our customers out in the field.
Appreciate that. It's nice for those who want to know to get an answer quickly. Any further... Oh, you're not quite finished.
One last slide. In summary, I mentioned that this is 1.7 million of a $12 million project as we look at upgrading our 57 KV to 115, utilizing existing resources, as I mentioned, and meets the FERC requirements for reliability standards.
I just have one additional question. I think I know where it is, but where is the substation exactly?
The McLaughlin substation is off of Maple Lane, and then Wilsonville substation is off of Beattel Road.
Not Beattel.
Beckman Road in Wilsonville is where we're heading for.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update. We hope it goes smoothly. And then the last of the presentations is a proclamation. This is a little bit of an unusual proclamation in that it is a requirement for an application that the city of Oregon City is making to become a Preserve America community. Whereas Preserve America is a White House initiative developed in cooperation with the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, the U.S. Department of the Interior, and the U.S. Department of Commerce, and whereas the goals of this initiative include a greater shared knowledge about our nation's past, strengthened regional identities and local pride, increased local participation in preserving the country's irreplaceable cultural and natural heritage assets, and support for the economic vitality of communities, and whereas this initiative is compatible with our community's interests and goals related to historic preservation, and whereas designation as a Preserve America community will improve our community's ability to protect and promote its historical resources, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Oregon City will apply for the designation of Oregon City as a Preserve America community, and be it further resolved that Oregon City will protect and celebrate its heritage, use its historic assets for economic development and community revitalization, and encourage people to experience and appreciate local historic resources through education and heritage tourism programs. So done. Now, Christina Robinson, why don't you come up and tell us the skinny on the Preserve America grants? I believe that Lloyd Purdy is writing that of the Main Street program, but it doesn't... It's not just for Main Street, correct?
No, no. Lloyd Purdy, the Main Street manager for Main Street Oregon City, has taken the initiative to work with the city for this application. And the Preserve America community came out of the White House. It's more of a public education program, but there are also grants available. And when Lloyd Purdy was Main Street manager in Cortland, New York, he was able to actually acquire quite a lot of money through the Preserve America grant program. And being associated with that program, he definitely encouraged Oregon City to apply for this designation, and there's a June 1 deadline for the designation. And we're working with Main Street and the city to apply for that.
So one of the requirements was a proclamation? So this is the door opener?
Yes, for future grants.
We hope so. Thank you. Commissioner West.
Christina, what other kinds of criteria will we have to... Will the city have to perform? Will we have to do anything else different, or just simply an application?
Yeah. The application actually is quite simple. We, you know, being a certified local government, having an historic overlay district, a historic review board, having a vast array of historical resources, it was pretty easy actually to apply for the application and meet all the criteria. So we're pretty confident that we'll meet the criteria for the designation.
Great. Thank you very much. We wish you success. Next, we'll move right into citizen comment, and we have one card. If you come to us to speak on a non-agenda item, we ask that you fill out one of these cards, and then when you come to the microphone, we ask you that you give your name and the city in which you reside. Your address is not needed for... To prevent identity theft and other atrocities of modern life, as long as you... As long as you print legibly on the card. So, William Gifford, you're the only one I have today. Please come forward. You may speak up to three minutes.
It'll be less than that, Madam Mayor and city commissioners. Thank you, and I'll try to avoid the atrocities of modern life. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City, and speaking as a citizen, and I had three quick comments to make all on the same theme. First of all, I wanted to give a public acknowledgement and great appreciation to our police chief, Mike Conrad, and his outstanding force for hosting the Chamber of Commerce this morning at our weekly meeting. It was very generous of them, and it was greatly appreciated. And secondly, I imagine someone will later be talking about his Meet Your Police program that'll be happening next Wednesday night, and I'm hoping that'll be announced at some time. But thirdly, on a very personal note, I wanted to thank specifically... I had an incident this afternoon. A neighbor was... My wife found wandering down our street in his sock feet, an elderly gentleman, totally disoriented, didn't have any money, didn't have a phone number that we could call, and we called 911 and liked that. I was very impressed, very impressed. Police officer came out, very sympathetic, helped this gentleman find his way to his home, and I just want to give a hats off, and a great big thank you for our super-duper police force.
Thank you. We always like to hear that about the citizens. Yeah, let this be an example to you. You may come to citizen comment with positive things to say. Happens so rarely, we just have to... No, it's not always true. Okay, as we look at the agenda this evening, we have... We honor elected officials who...
Mayor Norris, I think there's some confusion here whether these people want to speak now or on an agenda item.
It's an agenda item.
Yeah, I think it's an agenda item, correct.
Yeah.
It's for an agenda item, I believe. Yes, we'll make sure each... If you've come for a specific agenda item, we'll allow your comment, of course, at that time. Okay, as we look at the agenda, we honor elected officials who have come to us, so with that in mind, I would like to move the 7A, the wastewater treatment IGA, forward on the agenda. Are there any... Anything else that needs to be changed, or anything on the consent agenda that wishes... That needs to be removed for a separate consideration? Seeing none, then we will take the agenda, and the order, it is listed except for item 7A. So with that, let's go right into the...
One mistake.
Excuse me? Yes? One?
I was not there on... For 8E, so I guess that will have to be pulled from the consent, right? So we can't vote a block.
You can. You usually choose not to. You may have...
I wasn't here.
Yeah. You may vote for minutes at which you weren't present, but if you choose not to, then we will remove it. Okay? All right, with those changes then, let's move into the IGA with the wastewater treatment infrastructure proposal, and for that, we have Larry Patterson, our city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. Tonight before you is a very important piece of legislation. It deals with the IGA for the wastewater program. This is a partnership for the management of regional wastewater that should provide both financial benefits to all parties as well as an advisory ability for the partners to the Board of County Commissioners to help guide the governance of wastewater issues as we move forward. Tonight also, you have Commissioner Peterson here and Chris Story, who is counsel on this matter as well. Now, there are some important questions, I know, that have been addressed. I know you probably have some in mind, and I'd like to just kind of guess what some of those may be and answer some of those, and then you can take that discussion from here.
We have considered this at our work session.
You have. This has been a work session matter. First question is, is this a consolidation of districts? And the answer to that is no, not technically. The Tri-City Plant will become a regional facility that will process the majority of North Clackamas County regional wastewater. However, there will be two different set of books in the beginning and different rate structures for both of those... Well, for all residents who reside within this regional wastewater system. The question is then, is why do we have different rate structures? And that's because each of the sewer districts and areas had different needs. The Tri-City area, which Oregon City is part of, we actually were in pretty good shape, and as you recall, there was a developing sewer issue in regards to capacity and a potential moratorium regarding those areas served by Clackamas County Service District Number One. Expanding the Tri-City sewer district or Tri-City sewer plant offered the most cost-effective approach to solving that issue. By maintaining different rates, I think this does provide fairness in rate structure to the residents of each area while, again, providing the most cost-effective ways to meet regional sewer needs. Question two that you did ask at the work session is, what future voice do we have concerning future wastewater issues? And you have a similar voice in the future that we have today. This new governance is similar in a way to what exists. We are part of an advisory board to the county commission in their decision-making process regarding regional wastewater issues. The main difference now, we're just part of an expanded board versus just the three members that made up the Tri-City Board. What partners make up the wastewater advisory board? They're made up... Those parties that made up Tri-City, Gladstone, Westland, Oregon City. The unincorporated areas are represented to the Clackamas County Service District Number One, and then you have the cities of Milwaukee, Happy Valley, and Damascus. One of the questions too is, do all parties have an equal voice? It's kind of an interesting question because technically Gladstone, Westland, Oregon City have 1 and 1/3rd votes. The unincorporated rate payers of CCSD Number One, the cities of Damascus, Happy Valley, and Milwaukee each have one vote, and so it provides both sides of the river roughly four votes in that matter. But again, technically, the voting power belongs to the Board of County Commissioners, and so we form part of that advisory board, and what we forward to the Board of County Commissioners is an advisory position in regards to any issues that may be taken. Probably the biggest question is, does this agreement resolve all issues? And the answer to that is, no, it does not. There remains three significant issues to be resolved. The first is mitigation. The second is urbanization, and the third is the closure of the Kellogg Plant and restoration of the Milwaukee waterfront, taking number one first. As you recall, the city of Oregon City, when we were going through the first discussions regarding consolidation of wastewater at the Tri-City Plant, we asked for a number of concessions if we were going to serve as the regional wastewater treatment plant, which again, we have never said that we would not do.
Of course, wishing to be a good regional partner.
Of course, wishing to be a good regional partner. And again, as I've mentioned, it is the right thing to do. It's something had to be done for regional wastewater, and again, Tri-City Plant offered the most cost-effective approach to do that. However, this does take these issues out of that forum. It's been talked about, we could bring those up at the partners group, but I think really that's probably not the appropriate forum. And again, given the fact they weren't... Some of our concessions with some of those partners probably wasn't received very well in the beginning. I don't think they're going to go very far in that group as well. I think this really becomes more of an issue between Oregon City and the county, and I think that's an ongoing discussion on a host of fronts. The second question has to do with urbanization, and is... I think you have to look at sewer as urban service. How that is provided, where that's provided, has a lot to do with not only how our cities grow, but also how the unincorporated area grows and this whole issue of urban sprawl. That's an issue I think we, as a region, need to come together on and make decisions. That needs to be discussed. The third issue, and you've heard a lot about this, has to do with Milwaukee's desire for the closure and removal of Kellogg Wastewater Treatment Facility. It's a major project. It represents a future major expense. This is one that needs to be studied, and a decision on how and when that plant is closed needs to be forwarded, and that's some ongoing work this group will have to do. So with that, again, you have representatives here who can answer any questions, but that's a quick overview of a very important piece of legislation for you.
Thank you. Actually, I'd like to invite Chair Peterson and Chris Story to the microphone, please. And congratulations, Chris, on your recent election to the Oregon City School Board.
Thank you very much.
A lot of election winners here this evening for school boards. Actually, back to wastewater. I sat along with Chair Peterson against the room on the first Blue Ribbon Task Force, where it was extremely important for Tri-City to protect our rate payers. That was absolutely the bottom line, and we believe that we did that. We insisted that the rates for our customers would reflect only growth in our communities and not the expansion to the north. When those lines begin to intersect, then that makes sense for us to work together. So we will be receiving compensation for taking the extra sewage from the North Clackamas area. You did read into that, didn't you? And so that was a long and laborious process, and it was... We came to some decisions that probably not everybody was happy with, which, to me, is a good decision either. And then Larry represented us in the second advisory committee planning group, working to get to the IGA tonight. So this has gone through a lot of committee work and a lot of... We met with the Tri-City... Oregon City, Westland, and Gladstone City councils all met together once, I think. So we've really worked this over. I guess I want to reiterate the three concerns that I continue to have. We did discuss an impact fee, because the fact remains that someday Kellogg will leave Milwaukee's waterfront, and they'll get to redevelop. Someday, the treatment plant will probably leave Lake Oswego's waterfront, and they'll get to redevelop. While we've said, you know, bring it all here, we already have a footprint, and it will be actually a smaller one with new technologies, which again, we're insisting that it be as technically green and sustainable and technically advanced as possible here. Well, so we are giving up some wonderful waterfront land to solve a regional problem, and so I just think that's very, very important to keep on the table, that sometime the two of us will need to sit down and talk about that, you know, the impact and work that out. I think during the... Through the reserves process, the urban reserves role... The urban reserves process, it's been very key... Very important to us to talk about the governance of those properties that were outside a city. And I think, again, that will continue to be worked through, and it definitely impacts the sewer. And then, as we look at the decommissioning of Kellogg and the bringing that online, that is all work for the future. So it's not perfect. It hasn't resolved all of the issues, but I guess I have confidence that we've checked them all off, we've had so many eyes look at it, and it's changed so much that it's probably as good as it can be at this point, at least is my kind of read of it. So do you have comments at this point, and questions from colleagues? Then may I have a motion? Oh, Commissioner Neely.
I don't see anything explicit in terms of the rates, so one thing that concerns me here is on page four, check in 1.06D, it says rate evaluation. The partnership shall evaluate and recommend to the board wholesale water wastewater treatment rates to be assessed to and paid equally by all partner rate payers. And this, to me, is a little bit confusing if you compare it to what was just introduced by the city manager, so I'd like to have that explained.
I would be happy to address that.
Thank you.
At first, I would note this...
Would you introduce yourself just for...
My name is Chris Story. I am an attorney for Clackamas County, and I'm here in that capacity.
Not to give the school budget update?
No, no, I am not. This section regards the responsibilities of the partnership committee, which is the advisory committee that Mr. Patterson described to you. That committee only deals with future investment. The partnership can only deal with future investments. So what we're talking about here is, if the committee gets together, decides that an investment needs to be made, both... All the partners would support it, and then they would formulate how all the different partners would support that future investment. So when you're saying rates are going to be equal, it's going to be equal amongst those partners with respect to that future investment, that piece of your total wholesale rate that would reflect that future investment, not the rates overall.
Another question, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I think it's pretty clear from the agreement, when you addressed our session earlier, you were talking about the Tri-City people having equal votes as a group to those that are not served by Tri-Cities. We get one and a third votes, and I believe Chair Peterson made the statement, and you'll be the tiebreaker. In fact, that's not really what this is. This partnership is really an advisory group. The decisions are made by the Board of County Commissioners, and so you won't be a tiebreaker. You'll all make the decision, for whatever reason that is. I'm really concerned that mitigation hasn't been dealt with. This has been a sticky subject with probably all county properties within Oregon City. We probably have more county property that we can't tax in Oregon City. But I think even things like the use of gray water, which I don't know anybody's going to pay to be pumped elsewhere in the system, that the city of Oregon City wouldn't be able to use that. I assume that was brought up at one point in discussions.
Oh, yes.
And the fact that none of that is addressed at any level in this document, really relapses me. I expressed that at our session, and I'm expressing it probably a little bit more genteely here than I did at our session.
Genteely, like in gentingly?
Did you have a response?
I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I think we can respond to that. I understand the context of the conversation, and that the Clearwater Agreement did have recompense to the Oregon City rate payers for hosting the plant. And I would note that issue was never taken off the table by the county. The county would in fact be fine if the partners agreed to some sort of host fee, and we have been perfectly willing and able to facilitate that. Actually, the context of the conversations, as I understand it, is that the other two partners within the Tri-City Service District were very insistent that they would receive equally some sort of host fee, since they paid equally for the construction of the plant. And that was where the actual compensation discussion died, not really the county level, but at the members of the Tri-City Service District level.
As well as the city of Milwaukee then wanting a host fee.
Right.
Conversation never really died.
As you can hear.
Right, which is to say, if you can, you know, persuade your partners, I think the county would be more than happy to help that happen.
Commissioner West.
Well, it's been three years this month that I have been on commission. And through this three years, I've, there's been two other groups of city commissioners. And so I have watched this sewer issue go through all the, you know, twists and contortions it has in the last three years. And I just want to pass on a compliment to Mr. Patterson, because there has been no other subject that has raised the heart rate as quickly and easily, I don't think, of all these three years as this. And as Mayor Norris was trying to say, I know that he has fought the battle for as much as he could for the citizens of Oregon City on this issue. So I want to thank Mr. Patterson, and it's like Alice was saying, that, you know, a good agreement is one that nobody's, or everybody's given a little and compromised.
Yes, we much appreciate that. Commissioner Neely, I'm going back to your question. Was there a second part to it about gray water?
Yeah, gray water usage.
That's the part that I didn't understand, so I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Use of gray water.
Yeah, that was actually, again, part of the Blue Ribbon Panel, whether water reuse was going to be part of this agreement. And it was recognized that future investment would be necessary to make water reuse possible, and that would actually be a decision within the framework of the partnership about whether or not to make that investment, whether you're putting in purple pipes and where they're going to go and how much it's going to cost. And so both the cost and how it would be used became an appropriate subject to the partnership itself, rather than something that was pre-negotiated and a decision that was pre-made before the process was actually created.
We put our interests strongly on the table, however, that we believe for the reasons that you said that it ought to remain, that it be used here.
If I might just respond to that. The stated use of the, that this municipality could use the gray water at some point where the infrastructure would permit, it could have been stated without any commitment to cost of how that, of how that would be provided.
Commissioner Neely, I think the point of this agreement is the definition of the sandbox. It's not what we're going to build in the sandbox. Okay? So that's as far as we could get under the circumstances coming out of the political situation that we were in. So I think, I think we all feel like we would have liked to have gone farther faster, but I think because of the way the chips fell out, this is where we got to put it back together. And I think we'd all like to get to the point where we'd be able to package up everything with a neat little bow, but it just, we just couldn't get there yet. We had to figure out how we were going to play together again.
Commissioner Nocita.
Couple of questions and points. First, I suffer from two handicaps here. One is that I'm new, and I think Rocky will empathize with the fact that I feel like, you know, I'm coming into not only the third act of the play, but maybe the third scene of the third act of the play and trying to, you know, figure out what beforehand. And I'm also, and this drives my colleagues nuts, so you know, I'm also a bit of a detail monger, and I feel uncomfortable making decisions until I've had a chance to zero in on things myself. I see some knowing, some knowing smiles from staff there as well. And there's a lot of things that I still feel I need to get to know about this, the background and the history of this issue. And a couple of questions I'd like to ask upfront is, has Mr. Sullivan, have you memorialized, advised us on this draft of the agreement or on this IGA and concept?
I have not. I have given staff advice in a previous version, but I got this as pretty much a done deal last Friday.
Okay. Question I have, that I don't know either, there's a construction of a new plant going on right now. Is there any possibility that in the future, as growth occurs, there will be required yet a further expansion of the plant in Oregon City?
I would be happy to address that, yes. I mean, the master plan that was actually before the city commission, I believe, about two years ago, this is more background that you get to enjoy, and I believe Mayor Norris was actually part of that master planning group, outlined how the Tri-City Plant could be expanded over the scope of actually not just 20 years, but really to build out of this entire area of North Clackamas County. And the plant could handle the flows that would be generated from the entire region using advanced technology, the membrane technology, so you wouldn't expand too far onto the Rossman landfill which borders the Tri-City Plant. Now, the construction now is actually being sized for that possibility of expansion, because it's much cheaper to build the pipes and the infrastructure when you've already dug up the ground. So they're sort of overbuilding right now in anticipation that the need may come in the future that would make the next increments of investment much cheaper.
Sure. Now with that, I understand there was recently a land use approval for the current expansion?
Yes.
Did the, did the future build out if it were to occur? Because I haven't reviewed it. Was that in that land use application?
Yes, it was a, it was a 20-year plan that showed the various phases of expansion of the plan, what that would look like, what the different phases would consist of, and what the total build-out project would look like.
Okay.
It was all included.
Okay. Last question I have is, the evolution of the three cities, Westland, Gladstone, and Oregon City, I imagine at the beginning had their own wastewater treatment systems, and then they formed Tri-Cities, and they were in control of Tri-Cities. I see some shaking heads. Okay, correct me on the history of that.
Well, I'll do it. It appears that there was a county service district formed, and at that time, the, each of the cities, like in Washington County with Unified Surge Agency now, Clean Water Services, surrendered its individual ability to control wastewater treatment and gave it over to this district, which has as its board of directors the county commissioners.
So from the outset of the existence from Tri-Cities, was the governing board the county?
Always.
The county commissioners?
Yes, this is a county service. Actually, the, as I understand it, the district was formed in response to certain pressures from DEQ on the various cities to make certain infrastructure improvements, and the cities found it difficult to jointly invest and manage and govern, so they turned it over to the county to create a vehicle for...
Actually, they had, they had to find a governance form that allowed that, and the only form available was the county service district, and so therefore we did that. Now again, the investment and the construction of Tri-City, though, was on the backs of the rate payers of those three cities.
Yeah, and federal funds.
The county did not have an investment in that plant. That's why we, you formed the advisory committee, and for the most part, that advice has been what has been taken by the Board of County Commissioners. I do need to touch a little bit on the mitigation issue, mainly because I've fought this battle for way too long. And the issue of gray water was one of the things that we had asked for in that original piece. Again, it was pretty obvious that, when we brought that forward, that created quite a hubbub about things. And in my book, I would say there was a lot of piling on about me too. Nothing negates the fact that the plant exists in Oregon City, on Oregon City's waterfront, and thereby reduces our ability to develop that waterfront, thereby reduces our ability to collect assessed value on that property. No one else is in that boat, with the exception of Milwaukee, who wants to remove that plant. However, it was obvious too that the issue faced by the region was not going to move forward. That was going to be a major issue, both environmentally as well as development, if everyone didn't put down their swords and move on with this issue. I think it was Oregon City who stepped to the plate and said, we have to get to a compromise, and we put our needs on the back burner. That's why I think those need to be brought up. I think it's obvious they cannot go anywhere at the partnership. I think that's a discussion between the county and Oregon City, and I think that need not be forgotten in these discussions, so.
Yeah, and actually, the scene was, at the end of the day, everyone went home happy that the treatment plant wasn't on their waterfront, except for me. Commissioner West.
Did I understand you correctly that Lake Oswego has a wastewater treatment on their water, on the river?
Actually, the city of Lake Oswego does not own a wastewater treatment plant, but they do have a wastewater treatment plant on their waterfront. It is owned by the city of Portland, and they use it.
Okay.
So it is the exact same situation.
It's a possibility that it can be.
That the city of Milwaukee is in of, they have one, but it's not theirs.
But they're not part of this arrangement.
But we are not going to be taking Lake Oswego's affluent.
Not yet. No, that may be in the future. We did talk about that a little bit, because there's a possibility of an intertie.
There has been discussion.
Okay.
Obviously, the city of Lake Oswego right now is taking on a very expensive project, just as expensive as the one that we're under.
Right.
For a very small rate base, $100 million for the sewer interceptor in the lake. They are, I mean, it's going to be a while before they are able to afford a rate increase to be able to push forward on any other development plans. But certainly looking at diminishing the footprint, just like Milwaukee is also looking at, they are looking at a range with us of what could, as part of the partnership, scenarios. Do you reduce the footprint? Do you build on top of it? Do you remove it completely? And what do those financial scenarios look like?
Jim, I just have a second part. Mr. Sullivan, do you feel that you've had enough time to look over this agreement for tonight?
There's never enough time. Look, this has been through so many eyes and so many lawyers. I would always, I'm an old enough lawyer, able to pick holes in something. It generally takes care of what I understand the bargain to be.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners Nocita.
I want to, want to support this. There are some things I do want to check into before I feel comfortable voting yes. So I think what I'd like to do is make a motion to continue this to the next commission meeting. I would like Mr. Sullivan to review it. I'm not going to move that. I will sound other commissioners out on whether they want to do that, but I do want to make the motion that we continue this to the next meeting.
Is there any issue with that?
Is it time-sensitive?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, too.
That'd be the first one, that'd be the first Wednesday, first Wednesday in June.
Let me, let me present one issue you will, and I, I understand the concern. Again, the partnership that put this together was a very large committee, made up of a lot of different bodies. If everybody wants to take it back for their legal review, this will break down again. It was difficult enough, and there's some things in there, frankly, on a personal basis, makes absolutely no sense to me. Others see it differently. So it's a, you know, it's one of those suits you put on that doesn't fit real well, but it works to go to the dance with, and that's kind of what...
I think how I feel about it is that more time, I don't think will resolve any of the issues that I have. I think we need to get on with the next process to resolve the issues that I have, which are, I think, you know, very immediate and, and still I have great concern about. But again, because of the depth of the negotiation and the quality of it, I don't need any more time, because I don't think it will resolve any issues for me. I don't think additional information will do it.
I mean, if, if it really, if it's a comfort level to any given commissioner to put it off for one meeting, and if it's not time-sensitive in a two-week period, and I don't really care what the issue is, I think, I think it's in the general commission's interest to go ahead and, and do that. So I have no problem with actually bringing it back at the first meeting.
Okay. Is there a problem for anybody?
Is it, Commissioner Nocita, is there anything that we could take care of tonight? I would just like to encourage you to consider...
No, but you may be one of the people I will consult with in the next couple of days.
All right. Well, I'll be available to you. I know the position, it feels like, because I came in to this conversation right after Clearwater went down. And so I, as well as you, and Commissioner Smith, and actually Commissioner West, probably don't have all of the history. So we'll make sure that we have staff. But I think it, it's encouraging to hear the partnership that is forming, and the fact that we all recognize that it doesn't solve all the issues, but we're going to work on the issues, and we now have a framework to solve those issues. And it's not going to be easy, but I appreciate that everybody's moving forward, because we all benefit from this, rather than, as the city manager alluded to, it doesn't help when everybody's got their swords up and they're ready to...
I would just like to remind the commission of one thing that we have over a week between our work session and our, and our commission meeting, and that is the time to ask those kinds of questions and talk to staff and, and call and find, and get those questions answered. So that is why we have that time lag.
I just want to mention too, this agreement, because I think it's probably overworked. This is, for the most part, a set of bylaws for an advisory committee. And that's all of this.
That's all it is, yeah.
This does not commit anybody...
To any money or...
Right. Or any future outcome in any of the decisions, and what you have is actually a higher level of commitment from the county to work on some issues that were important to the city of Oregon City as well as its partners. So I feel very confident that this is something that is going to serve us for a very long time. But it also includes the fact that there is a revisit in three years on the governance issue, not just from the governance of these bylaws, but from the larger governance issue of where does, where does this belong? So I would just encourage you to really think about moving forward as quickly as you can, even if there's a delay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then do we need a motion to hold it over? Okay, may I have a motion, please, then, if that's the will of the commission?
I think I did move.
No, no, you said you were going to.
Going to.
You didn't say you did.
I would move that we continue.
Item 7A until...
Item 7A until...
June 1st.
No, it's June, the 3rd.
June 3rd, 2009 city commissioners.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the motion for continuance, is there any comment or discussion? Seeing done, may I see the vote, please?
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We will continue this June 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I just would like to note, if we could do that as soon as possible, because I will not be in town June 3rd, so I would like to help get your questions answered.
Get your questions answered.
Yeah, when?
Help you get your questions answered.
When are you heading out of town?
Why don't you guys talk about that offline?
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know. Let me tell you my personal.
Yes, great. We appreciate you coming and the time you've taken to help us with this.
Thank you.
We will follow you.
She's fine united, so.
Thank you. Now, we'll go back to the regular order of the agenda, and the next item is 6A. This is the Proposed Municipal Code and Comprehensive Plan Amendments, a gigantic project that has been started about a year ago, I guess. We've been working on it a long time. Anyway, this, we will, what we plan to do this evening is to open the public, to hear the staff report, open the public hearing, take testimony if there is, and then we will continue this on June 3rd, and with the hope of adopting it in August sometime, I think. Isn't it? When we, forgotten what we said here.
I'll go over the PowerPoint.
But anyway, you guys will go over the schedule. Okay. Dan, is this you? Mr. Trentlaw, Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mayor. Commission members, I'll give a brief overview of where we're at, and then Christina Robertson Gardner will go into some detail on all these changes. And again, this is the first public hearing on this, and we're proposing that it be continued, the public hearing until June 3rd for more testimony. So some background, this is a, this whole code amendment package is a result of the adoption of the concept plans for Park Place and Beaver Creek. And as part of that process, we also went through the code and looked at other issues that we thought needed improvement, and that's why we have such a high volume of items that are under consideration. The Beaver Creek concept plan, we're having issues with implementation simply because a lot of the proposed annexations have not occurred there. And so implementing ordinances specific to Beaver Creek are not included in this package, but we hope to move that forward in the near future. But the code amendments do contain zoning changes, proposed comp plan changes for the Park Place area. So a brief summary of some of the other code amendments that we're proposing, they deal with Chapter 16, which is our subdivision code, Chapter 17, which deals with zoning, including site plan and design review, and then smaller revisions to Chapter 12, which relate to street sidewalks and public places, and Chapter 15, building and construction. The Planning Commission held nine work sessions and seven hearings on this package. And as you recall, we had a joint work session with the Planning Commission, and then also a work session with you on April 7th. Between the time the Planning Commission approved this package and now, the staff has added some additional items for consideration. We've run these by the Planning Commission, and they feel fine that they're being considered by you at this point, but I'll briefly go over those. One is some minor adjustments to our natural resource overlay district. This is the district that implements Title 13 of Metro's code, which deals with wildlife, habitat and wildlife protection. We're still working with Metro on some of the detailed mapping issues. As far as the code goes, they're ready to issue us a letter. We expect it next week that says that we meet their criteria. And as I mentioned, we have some very minor mapping issues to work through with some of their biologists, and Pete Walter is working with them on that as we speak. Since the Planning Commission hearing, we've had a couple of citizens request rezoning as part of this package. And Christina will go over the details of those, but they involve a commercial rezona in Clackamas River Drive and some residential rezones from R10 to R8 along Pease Road. And one of the other issues, it's very timely, given the economic situation we're in now, is the extension of the validity of approved site plans and Platts. The current code says that you have one year to submit for building permits on your Platts or your site plan. We're proposing to extend that to another year, so it would be a two-year grace period. And then we also have some minor definitions that we've added, including low-impact development standards and definitions of habitat and definitions dealing with lighting standards. As you recall, at the Planning Commission work session that you had, there were a number of issues that were discussed. One was the need to take a closer look at a tree preservation code and policy, and this deals with protection of trees on private property. We already deal with trees on public property, but this is something that we'll be exploring in the next year. The other issue that came up was the possibility of looking at commercial rezoning in the south end. The Planning Commission recognizes, and so does the staff, that we need to provide for some convenient, commercial-type uses to serve that area. And we propose to take a look at that, maybe go through some education and notification, and come back to you in January of 2010 on that issue. Another outstanding issue is the temporary accessory structures, sometimes known as membrane structures. We've had a real desire to eliminate those, and we're going to take a closer look at that and come back to you in six months. There are several, well, it seems like a pretty simple issue. There are several areas in the code where we address this, including the nuisance code, and so we want to take a comprehensive look at all those relationships before we come back with you on that issue. Another issue, both amendments to the sign code and the natural resource annexation policy, those are issues that are, do not require a Measure 56 notice, they're not part of our land use code, so we'll be bringing those forward in separate processes also. And then the last issue was conservation easements, and right now, we do allow those as a way to preserve areas that are predicted in our Water Resource Code. And Pete Walter, the last work session, talked a little bit about the process that we, people can go through to apply for those easements. So with that overview, Christina will get into some more detail on the particulars.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Trentlaw. Mayor Norris and City Commission, I took the PowerPoint presentation from the April work session and updated it. We'll try not to go in detail too much, because you didn't see this before, but the audience and the cable audience haven't seen this, and I think it's just a nice recap of what we're doing. So I'll try to be concise but brief. We broke these up into three categories. This is a way to understand all the changes we're making. We call category one, comprehensive plan map amendments and zone changes. These include the Park Place Concept Plan areas. Two, substantial changes in implementation of new concepts, such as cottage housing or the natural resource overlay district. And three, just general reorganization, move-vout data code clarification cleanup. As Dan indicated, we have gone through a very long process. Added in red are the two additional meetings we had in March and April with the planning staff and City, and Planning Commission. Staff looked at proposed zone changes with the Planning Commission and looked at analysis of where areas, where generally land values were much higher than the building value, which in most cases is the other way around. And when land value is much higher than building value, it's a general indication that is an underdeveloped area. And the areas that were identified, not surprisingly, were areas that were developed to county standards that has since kind of been enveloped by the city. And so they're now almost in the middle of the city, but developed at a much more rural standard. And we went through the Planning Commission hearing for that. We sent notices to property owners, proposed for rezon and property owners within 300 feet. That went through hearings in October, November. We are adding additional properties this evening on Pease Road, and I have a map of those properties. A particular property owner came in, and as we looked at kind of the adjacent properties, we realized, you know, there were some kind of R10 orphans around the area, and specifically, the long, skinny R10 portion is right next to another R8. And for the most part, that'll be done as one subdivision, and doing a subdivision with split zoning is really hard. And so we really see this as a cleanup of some orphan R10 areas. And so that's why as staff, we kind of made this proposal at this level. And we did notice the neighbors for tonight's meeting and June 3rd. So there might be some people in the audience that are here to comment on that. Comprehensive plan amendments, as we discussed before, the Park Place comprehensive plans were identified for designation. We're utilizing existing comprehensive plan designations for the Park Place area, and those were a part of your previous package. The new proposal is for 13030 Clackamas River Drive, and that is the Hiram Street House. In the memo, there was a brief discussion about that. You know, as Clackamas River Drive and the jug handle and that area redevelops, the long-term viability of that as a single-family house, you know, may wane. And so on a staff level, we're more supportive of its change to mixed-use downtown. It's still a landmark, especially now with proposed demolition, denial and demolition by neglect. We have the ability to make sure that is retained as an historic structure. So I'm very supportive of that zone change. And that's the map. It is the property just north of the Kaufman Construction Site on Clackamas River Drive. We again had separate hearing notices for the meeting in October and for tonight's meeting and the June 3rd meeting to property owners within 300 feet of the designated sites and to those owners themselves. And I'll pass this over to Pete Walter to talk to you about nature in the neighborhoods and where we are in that process.
Thank you, Christina. Nature in the Neighborhoods is the Metro program to protect habitat in the, within the Portland Metro urban growth boundary. And the city is working with Metro to substantially comply with Title 13. Metro's regionally significant habitat map.
Pete, can I ask you a quick question on the terminology there?
Okay.
Commissioner Masita?
The terminology substantially comply, what, why the word substantially in front as opposed to comply?
There is an option for a local jurisdiction to substantially comply with Title 13 through its code and map. You can, Metro did a model code for cities to adopt, and you can modify that code, and you can modify the map, as long as it substantially complies and protects habitat, according to Title 13. So a number of jurisdictions are taking this route to substantial compliance with Metro.
So in other words, we didn't adopt Metro's model ordinance for BETA?
May I make a statement, because I think it's a very important one. In most respects, our overlay requirements and so forth exceeds Title 13.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's by about 600 acres.
That's correct. The overlay zone that we are proposing is about 1,500 acres. Metro has mapped about 900 acres of high and moderate habitat. So in addition to our water quality overlay zone, we have an overlay zone which is contiguous and significantly larger than just the HCA areas that Metro has mapped. And in addition to that, the code that we have developed to accompany the map provides for clear and objective standards, as well as a discretionary review process. Title 13 doesn't just require an overlay zone. It looks at your whole city code and all of your policies that accompany it, in order that you remove any barriers to what are called habitat-friendly development practices or also known as low-impact development standards, which the city is in the process, and Nancy's department is working on. And those low-impact development standards would be applicable citywide outside of the natural resource overlay zone. Additionally, Metro has reviewed the proposed Tree Code 1741, which we are putting forward for development review prosities, which is substantially more stringent than our existing tree protection code, but also provides flexibility in development process for reduced setbacks and lot sizes to incentivize developers to protect groves of trees outside the natural resource overlay district. And with this overlay district, we will continue to comply with our Title III requirements, which are our water quality overlay requirements that we have had an effect since 1999. We have a map that is in your packet. Because we are in the process of working through some recommendations with the Metro staff on the map, we will be bringing a final map with revised acreages to you on June 3rd. The map boundaries of the natural resource overlay district will be slightly expanded to include city parks and habitat within city parks. And those boundaries will correspond to the Metro habitat map in those areas, and also for streams, which have not been inventoried outside of the city limits but which are within the UGB. We'll have an expanded buffer of 50 feet, regardless of whether they are intermittent or perennial. So those will slightly increase the acreage of the final map that you will see on June 3rd.
Right. Normally, the buffer would have been 15 feet, so that's a 35-foot increase on each side.
Excellent. So to achieve substantial compliance, Metro will be giving us a letter detailing how we have complied, handing some minor clarifications and changes to the map. As I said, the natural resource overlay district protects 761 acres of habitat, as mapped by Metro, within a contiguous overlay, which totals 1,500 acres within the UGB. And we fully anticipate that we will have substantial compliance and an accepted NROD map, ready for adoption on June 3rd. There are some code changes that reflect the anticipated additions to the natural resource overlay district boundary. I've included a page on your desk as an exhibit entered into the record tonight that reflects those. When we were generating the natural resource overlay district using geographic information system analysis, there are some holes, or donut holes, within the natural resource overlay district, which are sort of anomalies. They're small. And what we've said to implement that is that where there are properties smaller than two acres within the natural resource overlay district, which are completely surrounded by the district, they shall be included within the district. This allows us to review those. And subject to review, and under 1749.30 map as reference, we just have clarified that the boundary of the district is a regulatory boundary that is mapped 10 feet beyond the required vegetated corridor width, which is specified in the code. And that is our regulatory boundary. Furthermore, under 17.49 Sub 110 width of vegetated corridor, we've added the references to habitat areas within city parks and habitat areas which are outside city limits and within the UGBs, which I explained before. Thank you. The next item of the code that deals with geologic hazards, this code update came out of the Park Place Concept Plan recommendations for revisions to the existing unstable slope review by the firm GRI and by recommendations made by Nancy Kraushaar. It includes expanded definitions of geologic hazards, which can mean more than just an area that's over 25% sloped, but an area that is deemed to be hazardous based on a variety of sources that are accepted. It requires additional review in the design and construction phase, such as a peer review and onsite geotechnical reports provided during the construction process. And it also references the Dogami Slope susceptibility map, which at the time of the code writing was not ready for adoption, but will be adopted as a separate process. And Masita's available.
Question?
Commissioner Masita?
In an earlier discussion back in January, February, it was noted that we don't have zoning regulations that address earthquake hazards per Goal VII. Does this fulfill that? Is this filling that hole?
I think I'll defer to Nancy Kraushaar on that question.
Well, it does to the extent that it deals with unstable slopes. Well, it does to the extent that it deals with unstable slopes and underlying geology. So in other words, when we look at this additional review process, not only do we look at slopes, but we look at the underlying geology. So it does relate to the earthquake.
So is this new? Is this something we haven't had in the code before?
We've had it, but it's been improved.
So some of the Dogami maps actually reference fault lines in the region and those sorts of things that are known. So to that extent that they are known, you know, it does look at those, even if they're not in the city.
And doesn't the Dogami information also now include old slide areas that we didn't ever have mapped previously?
That's correct.
Oh, Commissioner Neely.
Yeah, my question is in terms of technologies that are available to assess these hazard areas, what is available to us? I don't imagine it could specify in code specifically because those technologies change, but how is that evaluated?
Sure, I understand.
Well, if you're looking, I presume that, you know, you're looking at an area to find out whether there are evidence of geological activities that occurred there that could impact things and so forth, and how, you know, how those are evaluated. I imagine it's just more...
Have a code section for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we list all the various sources that we can use to bring a property in to review under this code section.
Yeah, so in Section 1744050, Requirements and Review Procedures, it says, actually, that's not the one, oh, when required, sorry, 174425. No person shall engage in the following regulated activities without review. Oh, no, that's not it. There's a big list of when something is considered a... There we go, here we go. So we list this state of, yeah, Page 196 of your packet from March, and it is Section We list the State of Oregon Department Geological and Mineral Industries Bulletin Number 99, the Portland State University Study of Neal Creek Canyon, the Portland State University Study of 1996 and 1998, the Dogami Open File Report, preliminary geologic maps. I mean, we have a big list of kind of how to capture in that. And, you know, once we were able to ground truth, the susceptibility maps, we'll be putting that into.
Nancy.
Could I add that I think maybe one of the things you may be getting at is the LiDAR technology that has been used by Dogami in the recent production of maps. And those maps have been just recently completed. They just did a press release not even a week ago. And so one of the next steps then will be, those of course will be adopted by this code. But then we also want to go back, and we had talked about using Salem as a model code in terms of not only just looking at these existing maps, but already classifying susceptibility of the known landslide areas in Oregon City. So that will be yet another phase of our fine-tuning our geologic hazards codes.
So that will be listed.
Right, and since the maps have just been released, we haven't had any time at all to jump to the next step. But this is a big step in itself.
It's a pretty big net.
It is, it's a big net. Did you have one?
Okay.
Please continue.
The final piece of code that deals with natural resource protection that I'll go over is the tree protection and land development and heritage tree process. The heritage tree designation process has been added into Chapter 1208. And we've added in a table there that talks about thresholds for trees that could be considered as heritage trees and designation process, which does require owner consent in this code amendment process. With respect to development review processes, we are adding a variety of incentives to protect trees in the development code under our new Chapter 1741. Some of those incentives include reduction in lot size up to 50% to allow for tree preservation and reductions in setbacks up to 50% as well. We're making differentiation within that code for various acreages of properties. Somebody could use conservation easement. They could protect it in a tract if they're going through the subdivision process, or they could just designate it as a deed restriction of some kind. But there's a variety of options for tree protection in the code that previously was not in there.
Just only because your summary, there's a brief one, you mentioned native trees, but of course there are other reasons for listing trees as heritage trees.
That's correct, and thank you, yeah. Historical importance, local significance, rarity in the range, all of those things are potential heritage trees. I should mention that there's also a transfer density, onsite transfer density permitted in the tree protection process when you're going through development review.
Mr. Neely.
Is there a way that the city can actively encourage that activity? I mean, we're going to designate areas in terms of tree density anyway, and is there a way that we can actually encourage that?
Outside of development review process and just increasing tree canopy or?
Well, yeah, I mean, somebody chooses to do that, or will it be imposed upon them? That is, if you've identified, if you've identified a significant grove of trees, can you impose something on the developer, or is it just something that you can encourage?
Right now, the way the code is written, it would be, depending on which option you take, it's required to mitigate in certain situations. The other options are at the, they're optional, are the developer's option. The incentives are...
I think the idea is, you know, we do have, we have a chart that basically says, based on where the tree is located onsite during development, you have X amount of replacement trees you must do. And so there's definitely an incentive to retain the trees because there's money saved by not having to pay or replant new trees based on the trees you're taking down. So what I really like about this is we give an option out to save. We really give developers pause to really think, do I need to take that tree down? You know, I don't just want to clear the site because it's easier. I have to make a conscious choice on what trees I'm taking down because I may have to pay more money if I do.
Yeah, we also are requiring mitigation within the building envelope where we previously did not.
That's right, addition. Commissioner West.
Define the building envelope again.
Okay. Depending on what your zoning is, if you're in a residential zone, the area that you can legally build in and not encroach on your setbacks would be the building envelope. And if you remove a tree currently under our current, if you have to remove a tree in that building envelope right now, you do not have to replace it.
Oh.
If you remove that tree in your setback, and there's no reason for you to really remove it because you could build away from that, then in that case you would have to mitigate for it now. In the future, you will have to mitigate for that tree to a lesser extent than you would have had to outside.
That's a great change.
Okay, thank you.
Significant because on some sites, the density is pretty high, so.
You're lucky to find a tree that actually falls in a setback.
Yeah.
I know we've talked about it before, but I just want to make sure I understood that clearly.
Right.
Okay, next.
Nope, sorry, wrong one. Real quickly, demolition, denial and demolition by neglect. These are two processes that have gone through the McLaughlin Neighbor Association and been sent comment to all property owners who own historic properties in Oregon City. And this regulation is for only individually designated historic structures. So these are landmarks, historic properties in Kenema, and designated properties within McLaughlin. So probably 450 within the whole city. And what this allows, currently we only can delay demolition of historic structures in Oregon City. So it ends up basically being a waiting game. They come in, they ask for their requests, we have a hearing, we put the longest limit on it, and they wait us out. And so we don't really get to get to the question at hand is, should this building be demolished? And so now we've actually created criteria so we can make findings for, yes, it should be demolished, or no, it should not be demolished. So there may be buildings that meet the criteria, and the Historic Review Board and the City Commission approve its demolition because it's met the criteria for demolition. And then there's some buildings that don't meet the criteria, and now you have the ability to deny that demolition request. The other part of this is demolition by neglect, which is going in Chapter 15 of our, outside the land use chapter, and that's the ability to work with code enforcement to make sure people don't actively stop maintaining their properties to get to a level that they could have demolition findings. So it's really to, I see them working together, and I'm pretty excited about that. And it went through the Historic Review Board process, and Commissioner Nocita was definitely spearheaded of this program.
Commissioner West.
Maybe you want to elaborate a little on how you can, can you take your house off of this designated list? So, I mean, I'm thinking of other loopholes, so how...
Actually, coming out of the legislature in the 90s, there's basically been a decision that if you did not register objection at the time of your local designation, so if you were not at the hearing that night and didn't enter into the record, I object to this designation, you or any future property owners agree to that designation.
I did not know that. And then, so the city, we've been talking about updating our code or updating our housing or property inventory, so can you be put on it at your, let's say you don't want to be put on that list?
All future designations require owner consent as of the mid-'90s.
For local.
For local.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, we're making amendments to site plan and design review. Real briefly, we're updating commercial standards and kind of how I see is we're upping the bar a little bit on material and design and really reemphasizing sections of the code before of making sure the building's primary architecture is facing the street, you have a direct pedestrian entrance from the street to the main building. And some of the things that were in our code but just weren't implied specifically, we are underlining and putting periods on and letting people know. We're introducing a cottage housing, which is a new type of housing product, which I'm also thinking is definitely going to be pursued as part of Aging in Place in Oregon City. It's looking at, within a single-family residential zone, looking at smaller cottages with a property. And the cottage housing design standards are a pretty high bar. So if you're going to have a cottage housing project next to your single-family home, it's going to be well-designed, it's going to have a common open space, it's going to have front porches, and it's not going to be more than, I think, you know, eight to 10 homes in one cluster. So we're trying to provide an opportunity for people to have one-story living within Oregon City and not going, they have to leave because they can't downsize within Oregon City.
Is that called a Boomer standard?
Sure.
It's called like my next step.
Commissioner West, Commissioner West has a question.
New knees in a little house. What is SFR district?
Oh, single-family residential, sorry.
You should have figured that one out.
Yeah, multifamily housing. We never really had really specific architectural design standards for multifamily. It was generally more of, you know, what does your open space look like? So we've finally taken a look at that to try to get more specific architectural standards. And we've updated our off-street parking and loading and been consolidating some areas and just been more specific about making sure that the pedestrian connection has just as important a role as the vehicular connection to a site. We've just done some miscellaneous changes. We've reworked the neighborhood commercial zone. We may implement this in future areas of Oregon City and potentially the Lizzie Road, Main Street. We've created a live-work option for the neighborhood commercial zone, which could be applied anywhere that the neighborhood commercial zone would ever be rezoned to. But currently, neighborhood commercial is not on any property in Oregon City, but it's kind of a holding zone for potentially park place and anywhere else we may want to look as an option.
Quick question.
Commissioner Nocita.
Is there anything analogous to that as far as live-work in the current MUD zone?
Well, yeah, MUD itself is allowing live-work. I think what we really see neighborhood commercials, how do you fit live-work kind of in our neighborhood areas and our small Main Streets? So if we ever did maybe commercial zoning in South End, this might be the zone we want to do because it's, you're not getting multifamily. It's getting, you might get some commercial, you might get standalone commercial or a live-work related to housing, but you're not going to get a standalone multifamily product, which you would get potentially under a mixed-use corridor and mixed-use downtown. So it's just another opportunity and another option. We've, for Measure 49, we've established a procedure for which owners of private real property located within Oregon City can file a Measure 49 claim, that was a requirement. We've updated our refuse and recycling standards, and we've created a policy which we didn't really have, so we've been working with Clackamas County on their standards and trying to fit it to meet Oregon City. And specifically in the R2 dwelling district, we have removed single-family attached row house as a permitted use within the R2 multifamily. We feel that that design type has been already overbuilt in Oregon City, and we are proposing it be removed from the R2 multifamily zone. And those are the single-family attached subdivisions where the row house is on a specific tax lot, and it's not multifamily. Just general verbiage cleanup, definitions, reorganize some underlying zones, clarify language, and remove outdated titles, processes and language. Dan Drantla discussed the outstanding items I've just listed in there. Most of them are going to be pursued outside of this process or will bring it back in January. I would like to add one more exhibit into the record. It says amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code, Section 1704-500, 1704-1010, and 1204-005. And these are just a little bit more cleanup. And having discussions with our code enforcement department, they felt that our definition of garage may impede some of their ability to do code enforcement, so we are striking the including carports from the garage definition. We are removing the word permanent as the definition for recreational vehicle that it flat-out is not a dwelling. And the jurisdiction management of public right-of-ways within our telecommunications chapter, and it really needs to be in our public streets chapter, and we're adding it to there. And at this time, we're not removing it from our telecommunications chapter, but we may amend it in the January 2010. Tentative timeline, tonight is May 20th, this is our first public hearing. We will be presenting the ordinance to you at the next meeting, June 3. And if it's the city commission's direction, we'd have the first reading of the ordinance. The second reading of the ordinance would be June 17th, and we have a July 1 extra meeting if required.
Great.
And we're available for any questions. I know there are people in the audience ready to make comments, and we'd be willing to, we're ready to comment on any of the public comments. And at some point after that, we can kind of give staff direction on anything that is brought up this evening.
Great, thank you. Commissioner West.
Christina, what did, when you were taking including carports out, what's the intention there? What's it going to say?
Well, if you include carports in this definition, it impedes code enforcement's ability to regulate solid waste storage inside a carport because it'd be considered a garage and outside of the regulatory ability of code enforcement to...
Oh, good one.
So we don't want to do that. So we're taking that out.
We have some issues with that. A lot of carports with lots of verbiage under them.
Visible.
Visible.
They just need to put a membrane structure over there.
Oh, yeah. We will be working with code enforcement this summer. You know, I think some of these membrane structures and some kind of conflicts between how we deal with development definitions and what they need for code enforcement, we're going to be potentially coming back to the Planning Commission in the fall and maybe having a complete rework of Title 8, which is the nuisance chapter, or maybe it might just be a little tweak. But, you know, we want to make sure that Title 17, our zoning chapter, works for us and nuisance abatement works for code enforcement. So we're trying to work together on those issues.
Okay. Commissioner Nocita.
Quick question on the process. Where in the process is the city commission's role in proposing and discussing proposed amendments to what the planning staff has proposed?
At the work session, at the public, anytime. I think it's important to get that into the front end so that staff can have a response.
I would assume it would have to be before the first reading of the ordinance. Would amendments have to be voted on prior to the first reading of the ordinance?
If you had further amendments, you have to reread the first reading. It's doable.
Okay.
But if possible, I think it'd be great to have them further towards the front end.
Right.
It makes it easier. It makes it easier for us, I think, to have an opportunity to study them. Commissioner Neely.
That's a question to Mr. Drinlaw. You stated that there were code amendments that would be coming from the Beaver Creek concept land, and, but you mentioned that we've included the ones here from Park Place, and I'm a bit curious as to why they're not in here at this point. Are there issues that you cannot resolve until you have major annexations out of there? Because we've had major annexations, failures at Park Place as well.
Yeah, I think part of it was the complexity of the uses proposed in Beaver Creek. It's mixed use with an employment emphasis, and if, I'll just give you the case in point, is Metro has just finished their employment forecast for the six-county region, and, you know, two years ago, they were saying we, we had this huge shortage of employment lands, and now they're saying, we don't have a shortage. So.
At least till 2030.
Yeah, till the year 20, between now and 2030. So there's a lot of these issues that are floating around. The prospects of development of Beaver Creek don't look that imminent, so we felt we had the time to spend a little, put a little more thought into the uses for Beaver Creek. Really, the only implementing code that we'd probably, you'd probably see from Beaver Creek would be the application of the comprehensive plan, zone districts and zoning. All the things related to, you know, steep slopes, the water resource protection that we're talking about tonight, that, that applies to Beaver Creek area. So in a way, we're doing a lot of the Beaver Creek implementation, we're just not addressing the specifics of zoning yet.
I mean, the Park Place is utilizing existing, existing city zone with a tweak or two, like in the neighborhood commercial, but Beaver Creek kind of came out of the gate with a brand-new Beaver Creek zone.
Out of the box.
And so, that's a different animal, and not knowing market and some issues, it's different than just applying existing city zoning.
Okay.
May we open the public hearing, take testimony, and then take a break?
Yes.
And then come back to staff response? We can have our discussion now and the next meeting, and the next meeting, so we have an opportunity for quite a bit of discussion on this. Okay, I will open the public hearing. I have two people who signed up to speak to us, so would you both please come forward and have an opportunity to talk to us up to three minutes? Stephen Kendrick and Richard Wells, please.
I'm Stephen Kendrick, I live at 16020 Short Avenue. My property is directly behind Kaufman Excavating and the higher-end straight house. My only question, I guess, is, or comment, is 20 years ago, there was a master plan for the whole lower Park Place shelves to cause for, called for hotel, office, commercial, and a little kiosk down at Kelly Field. And my question, or I'm wondering why Kaufman's got kind of stuck in there someplace. He wasn't even aware of it until we tried to build a building down there, and then he found out he was the MUD stuff. And now this piecemeal stuff, as opposed to, and how far will it go? You know, we get a letter that says, "Our property is being considered for it." Well, where does that stop? Does, I mean, why does, why isn't it the entire lower Park Place shelf as opposed to this piecemeal stuff that's happening?
Okay, good question. Well, let's take them both, and then we'll do the rest.
Well, he pretty much summed it up right there.
Do you have the same issue?
15975 South Short.
Just your name?
Richard Wells.
Okay.
And just me being a homeowner there, I want to, the impact that, the harem house being MUD and me being R8, what impact does that have on my, on the value of my property? Because personally, I don't want to have a residence next to a law office or a dentist office, or, like Steve said, this, I mean, to me, it's all or nothing. I mean, you can't just cherry pick these properties and say, "Well, this is going to be MUD, and this is going to be R8," or, I mean, it just seems like it should be all or nothing. And the impact it's going to have on me personally, being, living next to a MUD versus me and R8.
Okay, great, thank you. And the next, we do have one more. Craig Erwin, are you, are you coming up with Annie Torres?
Yeah.
Okay, please both come together.
Well, my name's Craig Erwin, this is my wife, Annie. We, we happen to live at 13030 South Kaufman Reserve Drive, and we're actually for this change. You know, we, we bought this house because we liked the fact that it was a historic, you know, home, and, you know, a lot of these homes get taken down and done, you know, neglect, or, or just, you know, they, they just get taken away and replaced with something new and modern. And the realization is that we may not be here, you know, forever, for five or 10 years or whatever, and this would just allow us to, if we did leave, with some kind of assurance that this house would be remained intact and protected by the city. And it allows them to have final say on what happens if somebody comes in. And I'm not denying that, you know, these, the neighbors think or, you know, feel that it should all be all or nothing, you know, that's something for you guys to decide, I'm not one way or another for that, you know, but I, we are for this, and so that's.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything to add?
I, I just.
Please introduce yourself and the city.
I'm Annie Torres.
Thank you.
I'm just concerned with my neighbors, too. I think that they should be included, or, you know, whatever they feel is best for their property, if they can apply for this, or request this, or whatever, that I agree with, I'll look both of them, that this should kind of be a, the whole section. It's only one little street behind us, basically, on Short, included in this whole big picture.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who's come to testify this evening? That's all the cards I have.
Can I?
So, just a moment, I need to close the public hearing. Do we have everyone? Okay, I will close the public hearing, and then we will take a break, and then come back with the staff response and ability to ask.
Excuse, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, we were going to keep the public.
Oh, that's right.
Hearing open till June 3rd.
That's right. The public hearing is now reopened, and we'll, we will continue to have the public hearing opened, and then we'll have the staff response after the break. Let's take that till 5:00 after. Back to the microphone, and then you give a response, and then just a few more minutes, maybe, for throwing some things on the table, and then we'll continue this to our next meeting, since we have opportunity to do that.
Yes, regarding the rezoning question, what we would propose to do is take a look at the map and bring it back on June 3rd, and our options are to look at specifically this one property. If we want to expand the zoning, we'll have to put it off to, I think, our six-month, our next review in six months, because we haven't done adequate notification to include additional properties, so. But we'll, we'll bring a map to you at the next meeting, you can go over some of the details.
Map and recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, other items then that the city council, the city commission would like to put forward for further review? Commissioner Neely.
In terms of one of the questions I presented earlier, Pete came up to me, and he gave some additional verification. I thought he might want to do that for the whole, whole commission.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Neely. With respect to the tree protection code, a development review property has to comply with one of three options in this code. They either choose Option 1, which is mitigation, in which there's retention and removal of trees with subsequent mitigation by replanting. Option 2, which would be a dedicated tract, which through the subdivision or partition process, protection of trees or groves by placement in a permanent protection tract, is much like we have for water quality right now. And Option 3, which would be for smaller properties, which are developing or for commercial sites potentially, which would be protection of trees or groves by recordation of a permanent restrictive covenant, which could be, and if you're in a tract, going back to Option 2, that tract could be held by a conservation agency, by a approved organization, conservation agency or organization that is tasked with the long-term protection of that grove or the city potentially. Similar language to what we have in our current water quality resource overlay zone for tracts, it's just applying to tree groves. And then under the restrictive covenant, that, that recordation of a permanent deed restriction, also known as a protective covenant, which would be a little more flexible. And under each of these three options, there is a, there's several criteria for how those are enforced through the code.
Okay. Any further things to put on the table at this point? Yes, Commissioner Nocita.
Just have a clarification. The NROD, Chapter 749, is that currently the WQRA code? So it's going to be renamed?
It'll be consolidating. The code will be completely replaced.
Okay.
Any others? Okay, thank you very much. That was a good, good review, and I am so impressed with how far we've, we've come in both listening to the public and addressing natural resource issues, and I guess, making our city more livable. Many of the complaints that we've heard through land use hearings over the last seven years, we're kind of, we're going some different directions, which I really applaud, so.
I'm going to make a personal request, if, if at all possible, in terms of the scheduling.
Okay.
I've been asked by the National Park Service to perform a function on June 17th that would conflict with this meeting. I do not want to not vote on these ordinances, and I'm wondering if there's some way that we could put that off the agenda for the 17th. We have extra meeting if required, we could take the second reading, or if there was too much discussion to deal with the first reading, the first reading or the second reading on the, on July 1st, as a request.
Okay. Does staff, will we let staff look at that?
We're open to either of those options.
Okay, yeah, these aren't time limited there.
They're not time sensitive.
Okay. Commissioner West.
Commissioner Neely, I'm not going to be here on July 1st.
Well, let staff deal with that and come back with a recommendation on when we can do it.
He's more important than me.
No, they need to decide what to do with both of those issues.
I'm joking, I'm joking, everyone.
You will be here?
No, I'm going to be gone.
That's not the joke. Ah, okay. Okay, got it. All right, well, let's move on to the next item then. Thank you very much. Okay, what we have now is the continuance of pending ordinance for the vacation of sections of Caulfield Place, number one, tract C, authorized by Resolution 0908, and this is also a item that we are going to continue to June 3rd. And I need a motion on that, please. We have a motion for continuance.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Neely for continuance. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Next, we have move to 7B, which is Resolution 9-12, declaring the necessity and intent to appropriate real property and authorizing institution of condemnation proceedings if necessary for our Beaver Creek Road project. And the further staff report, let's have Nancy Crushour, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a matter before you that is required as part of our ability to acquire right-of-way to meet the intent of the laws, and we have, we're in the, we've completed the preliminary engineering, and are preparing to do final design for adding a right-turn lane. If you're at the intersection of Beaver Creek Road and Mulala Avenue, the Beaver Creek eastbound leg needs a right-turn lane to improve the capacity of that intersection. And we've provided you a drawing that shows that the existing right-of-way we have, right-of-way that we have, won't allow us to add a right-turn lane, and essentially, to add the right-turn lane, the sidewalk ends up outside the right-of-way, so we need to acquire a right-of-way to complete that project. And this, we, of course, hope that we would not have to go into actual condemnation proceedings, but in case we do, the city commission needs to pass a resolution that approves the potential condemnation of that right-of-way acquisition.
May I have a motion, please?
Before you do.
Commissioner Neely.
I waited for this opportunity for years.
Okay.
Nancy, Nancy Crushour and I always have directional disputes of what's south and what's east and what's west and what's north in Oregon City. Now, a part of that's because our streets just aren't laid out.
They're going north and south.
But I would, I would.
I would think a compass can clear up this dispute.
I would look at your second paragraph here, and I say, "This is not what you're describing on your map." Through the adoption of this resolution, widening the west leg, the west leg of Beaver Creek at Mulala Avenue to accommodate a dedicated east right-turn lane is impossible.
That's how we express it, in traffic language.
Okay, she speaks engineering, you speak statistics, and luckily, that's not what we have to worry about.
All I do is looking at the map.
All right, may we have a motion for adoption, please?
I, I'll make a motion. I move approval of Resolution Number 09-12, declaring the necessity and intent to appropriate real property and authorizing institution of condemnation proceedings if necessary.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Any comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item in business is 7C, supplemental agreement to the personal services agreement for the I-205 Oregon 213 Redland Road crossing. This is our jug handle improvements, Phase 1, final design services with Obeck Consulting Engineers. And I'll ask our city engineer for the staff report, please.
Yes, this is another phase of the design and the planning work for the jug handle project, and it also includes some work for the Redland Road intersection improvements. We've brought to you the first two phases of this contract, and we're now ready to embark into the next stage of work, which primarily includes the environmental studies that are needed to pursue these improvements. And in order to stay on schedule, to keep the project moving, we recommend that we do continue along with this contract, and that the, we are asking the city commission to approve the next phase of funding for the engineering services.
Okay, may I have a motion on this one, please?
Well, I move approval for the supplementary, supplemental agreement number three to the PSA Oregon 213 on the I-205 Redland Road, oh, crossing of Oregon City formerly known as Oregon 213, I-205 bridge to Abernathy Creek, tributary jug handle improvements, Phase 1, final design services, Obeck Consulting Engineers.
That you are authorizing city manager to execute that?
Yes, that's what I said.
Thank you, I thought so. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there comment or discussion on this item? Seeing none, Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Next, we have the McLaughlin Promenade Restoration Project, one of our stimulus projects. Nancy?
Thank you. At, at a recent city commission meeting, when we were discussing the local agency agreement for the McLaughlin Promenade economic stimulus funding, the commission requested that we make sure that the historic review board was fully aware of the project, and there actually came up a question about whether or not we needed to go through a land use action at the historic review board. And in response to the city commission's request, the planning staff, Laura Butler, who is actually helping with the project management for the McLaughlin Promenade project, and Christina Robertson Gardner, who staffs the historic review board, they brought the project, described the project in detail to the historic review board at two meetings, and looked for them for comments that we. and looked for them for comments that we would bring back then to the City Commission. And there were, they are in full support of the project. I would actually like Christina to maybe provide a little more detail than I included in my report to you, but just address the questions that may have come up or not and to reiterate their support for the project. And the decision not, that it was, did not require HRB approval through their process for public improvements, for large public improvements?
Major public improvements.
Major public improvements. Thank you.
And Laura Butler, who has, definitely has a lot of detailed knowledge of the project, is also available. The project was presented to the Historic Review Board at a notice public hearing and then Laura Butler came to a subsequent work session to speak about the bidding process and some of the more of the details involved. And we kind of asked the Historic Review Board to forward on their comments and to make their determination if this fit under the major public improvement or if it fit under maintenance and repair. And at this point, they believe that this project fit under the maintenance and repair and didn't require a land use review, but they were appreciative that we were bringing them into the process. We always planned on bringing them into the process, just not, most likely in the summertime, not during the, you know, ODOT process of getting the plans together. We plan on going back probably at the end of the summer, once the project gets started and maybe even bringing the consulting engineer if they have any extra questions. But at this time, they, A, do not believe that it required a land use approval and believe this project fell under the maintenance and repair section of the Historic Overlay District and didn't require a land use approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Nacita.
Yeah, I think there has been some pretty significant misunderstanding of the motion the City Commission passed on this matter. The motion that I put forward was not a motion to make a significant presentation to the Historic Review Board and then just come and tell us what they said. The intent was that the City Commission would get the same presentation that the Historic Review Board got. And I, I don't know where the communication breakdown was on this.
Well, that's not my-
We went over the tapes and everything, so we must have missed the charge.
That wasn't my understanding either. I thought we were asking them for, that, I thought the concern that you had expressed was that the historical integrity of the promenade, we wanted assurance that it was being done in the highest quality and that we were asking for reassurance from the Historic Review Board that they had, that was my understanding.
There was some kind of misunderstanding.
I did hear that perhaps you wanted to be the project manager, though.
That was on the tape.
But we'd be happy, I mean, we'd be, the project team would be happy to give a presentation to the City Commission. That's not a problem at all. I'm speaking for Laura here. And it could be the same presentation.
Well, I'm not sure, actually, Commissioner West, were you on the commission when we had the presentation originally from the engineer?
No, I don't really remember that.
I think that it would be good to have a presentation, if you're convenient along the way.
Well, the public might enjoy it.
But I think it would be instructive because, as I recall, when we had it originally at the work session, it was extremely detailed and the, the craftsmanship-
Craftsmanship.
Yeah, the craftsmanship and his knowledge of the techniques that were used was-
We'll schedule it for an upcoming meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Or could it, would it have to be a meeting or a work session or?
It's fine, I think it's fine here because it's a public information.
We might want to see on the consultants.
They all are now, but-
Pardon?
With the video streaming, we, we're all, but we can do it here because we also have the cable access.
Yeah, I think cable access makes it a better fit. Okay, do we need a motion on this, then?
No, we just, we'll just set that on the agenda.
Yeah, that's why I thought it says motion, but we already approved it, didn't we?
I think there are a couple of questions I would like to ask, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Christina, you and I had talked about the extent of sidewalk replacement and the type of texture that any replacement sidewalk would have that would match the existing sidewalk so it didn't look like some hopscotch. And I just, I'm just kind of curious as to how much of the sidewalk along the promenade is scheduled to be torn up and replaced?
For this level, just I may need to bring Laura Butler, the project manager, in.
Good evening. Laura Butler, Assistant Planner, Project Manager for the promenade. We do have a couple of sidewalk panels that are replaced. There are a couple of panels that are dangerous and don't comply with our ADA requirements. There's slipping and some of them have cracked quite a bit. Not a whole lot of panels have been replaced. We can go into it in detail in the presentation-
Okay.
-at the upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Forward to the plans.
And the same thing, just briefly, the other question is about the texture of the aggregate used on the crossbars.
Sure.
Just, you know, so that they match as much as possible with the ones that are there.
Right. The crossbars have since eroded, so you have exposed aggregate. And there's always the question is, do you restore it to what it was? Or do you match any repair panels to your existing condition? And that's really a discussion of restoration or maintenance. And because, you know, we're not replacing or repairing every single section, it really makes more sense to match the existing aggregate that's there. And that's, that's the path that's going down. And I just had a conversation actually with Ian Johnson, a National Register Coordinator at State's Track Preservation Office, and he kind of agreed, you know, you really, unless you're doing a full restoration project, you really need to be doing more of the matching existing conditions. And that's what we're doing.
And just to clarify, we will be replacing every railing because they pose a health hazard as they're at the top of the cliff. And a lot of them have eroded or they're missing completely. So they will match the exact exterior, or material of the railings that are left currently. And that'll be in our bid documents and all the construction documents as well.
I got confused. You said-
Commissioner Neely?
I thought you said that they're all going to be replaced and now they're going to match the ones that re-
The railings will all be replaced?
Yeah.
And we're doing portions of the sidewalk, just a couple of sidewalk panels, not all of them.
Oh, you're talking about the sidewalk.
Why, why were all the railings going to be replaced?
A lot of them have eroded significantly. A lot of the rebar is either exposed, missing in some cases, and all rusted out. And so the ones that are somewhat intact are on their way to failure as well. So, in that case-
And now some are-
Yeah. We want to make sure that the promenade's safe for everyone in the future, so we'll replace all of them.
Other questions? Commissioner Smith?
I'm glad to hear that the crossbars are all being replaced because taking people up there and watching them sit on them and on tours, it bothers me. And I think the presentation, the importance of it is just so we can understand all of those little teeny questions that could be big questions if they're not done right. You know, the last thing I want to see when I'm walking down the promenade is brand-new pavement that doesn't match. And so, you know, all these things are like, oh, I hope it's, so the presentation, I think, is just mainly that we know, okay, this is going to be nice and it's going to look right. Because it's such a crucial piece of our city and so many people don't even know it exists, really. And so I think this is going to give us a huge opportunity to really refocus some attention on that area and bring people to it. So it needs to be done perfect.
You're saying we should have media coverage when this works being done?
I'm sure we will because it's, it's been noticed. So we're restoring a treasure. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would like to probably let the commission know at this time that we are going to be doing it in two phases because of the winter coming months.
Okay.
And we originally had set up the contract to be a continuous contract, but then what we learned in, from ODOT and because of their bid award process, which tends to be very long and drawn out.
And they have to bid it for us.
They have to bid it for us. So we got everything we needed to them on time. We hurried up. And then it's sitting there now, waiting to go to bid. And then it'll, the bids will be open and then I'll sit there waiting to be awarded for about six weeks. But, so we probably won't even start construction until that August 1st, which only gives us three months in Oregon without winter weathers that we just don't want to be stressed out over, are they pouring concrete, are they doing something? So our consultant has amended the bid documents to include two construction phases. One, this summer, fall, and then to start up again, I think it was in next March, they start up again? But essentially then to do another cycle, March through next August, that would take them into the second phase. And likely, the first phase would be over near the McLaughlin House and the tunnel area and the grand staircase. And then all of the work we were just talking about would occur next, a year from now.
Hmm, okay. That's new news. Okay, Commissioner Neely?
I don't know how much, you know, on our 150th anniversary here, how heavily that tunnel's going to be used this summer. Is it, is it going to be closed off?
I think what they do is they have, depending on what the kind of work they're doing, maybe, Laura, you can answer that more accurately than I can in terms of the traffic control for pedestrians.
Right. There will be pedestrian routes. The tunnel itself, portions of the wall adjacent to the tunnel will be deconstructed and then reconstructed back. So the same rocks will be placed back in the same configuration that they were before. So as far as work goes, that would be the most major work that we'd be doing. So that would require closure for pedestrian traffic at that point.
You'll just have to take the elevator. Commissioner Smith?
Question along the same lines, because I know of a lot of people that are going to be using that path over the summer. So while construction, while sidewalks are being repaired, it'll, there won't be really any access, well, I guess in part there will be, but is there any kind of detour or ways to get around the sections that are being worked on so that the promenade is still being used throughout the summer?
Yeah, that's a great question. The, so this summer, we're working on everything east of the elevator. And so in that case, you'll be diverted up Washington to Center Street and then you'll come back and just use the elevator rather than the stairs in that case. And you would just use Washington Street rather than the tunnel.
And for months or a month or?
We'd start in August and then it would last a couple of months this summer.
Okay. Because that really is going to affect some, some major tourism opportunities. In my case, I do tours of that promenade every Friday, Saturday night. And so that'll affect some of the aspects of some of the things I think the city offers in the city, but-
We'll make, as we do with many of our other projects, we'll make sure that there's a lot of information about what's under construction, what areas are closed, what are the detour routes and that kind of thing that'll be available on the web. And I know in, in our other projects, Laura will be able to have a list served that she sends out a weekly, bi-weekly, whatever announcement is to, so that you'll be aware of what, what kind of things you need to be anticipating.
And I, I put this kind of along the same lines as the bridge, where this is going to be a headache, but I'm willing to deal with it because the end outcome is going to be so significant that I think it's going to be worth it.
Well, and you get, you get, your visitors get to double dip.
That's right.
Because you say, you know, you've got to come back and see what it looks like when it's finished. So you really get a double hit. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, before they leave, let me just point out too, and the obvious here, and kudos these two ladies for some of the multitasking and willingness to do it. It's one of the ways that the city can address all the challenges it has before with the staffing that we do have. It also explains too, while we're not making reductions in community development, but what we have is folks willing to jump in in other areas of the city and assist while those needs are there. So again, we appreciate the extra work.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, we have the consent agenda left and so may I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda minus Number E, please.
Yeah, I move approval.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. On the consent agenda, please pull the commission, Nancy.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now we have Item 8E, the minutes of March 18th regular meeting. Let me have a motion for adoption.
Still move.
A second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Neely on the minutes of March 18th. Nancy, please pull the commission.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Abstain.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero with one abstention. Next, we move into, that concludes the business agenda and we'll move into Communications, beginning with our city manager, Mr. Patterson.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, I just have a couple of quick things to report on. First of all, the city today did receive a lawsuit in regards to access on 11th Street. We will be scheduling an executive session at your next meeting to brief you on this matter. We came in too late today to get that on the agenda and review that with you, but Mr. Sullivan will be discussing that with you. And it has to do with access on to that street off of 99, which is associated with some of the changes being made with the McLaughlin Boulevard project. Also, I want to mention too, that tomorrow we begin interviews for our library director. And tomorrow evening from 5:30 to 7:00, we do have a meet and greet scheduled at the Pioneer Center, so I hope you can attend that. We do have some conflicts. The Chamber of Commerce tomorrow evening from 5:30 to 7:00 also has a meeting to recognize some of the pioneers of the chamber, of which the city happens to be one of those. And they do need a representative there, so if one of you would rather attend that to receive that recognition, if not, I'll have to gather staff tomorrow and we'll draw for the black bean.
And, and we also have a Clackamas Cities Dinner and the Westling, the South End Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Association is also meeting, so.
And, you're stealing my thunder here. We also, the first meeting of the River Health Partnership meeting is tomorrow night and I'm so sorry, I won't be able to attend that.
What's the River Health Partnership?
That has to do with the wastewater partnership agreement that we talked about earlier today because I do have to be at the meet and greet tomorrow evening.
Of course. So what's that?
It's called River Health now.
What, what's the group, though?
It's the partnership agreement that we talked about with the wastewater.
It's the second phase? I mean, it's the, it's the new advisory committee?
It's the first meeting of that.
Oh, the new group, okay. Great.
Can you guys meet as a partnership?
Before the IGA sign?
I think we should, I think we should direct them not to go.
We haven't signed the IGA yet, so.
That concludes my report.
Okay. May we have reports from the community representative? Yes, Commissioner Nacita.
I just had a quick update from the city manager. Mr. Patterson, at the Urban Renewal Budget Committee, there was a question on that particular light item of the budget as far as to consulting and et cetera and planning and-
That is a consolidation of everything in there. That is consulting, that's legal, that's materials and services, staff cost, everything that the Urban Renewal Commission uses to conduct its affairs. That's what that item was about.
Okay. Other reports? I have a bunch. Commissioner Smith?
Not necessarily report, but a couple. Well, first of all, I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I was attending parent-teacher conferences and that was also the night preceding the festival and down at Clackamas Park. So I wanted to thank everybody who participated in the Teddy Bear Parade and the Pioneer Family Festival, which turned 10 this year. And so a lot of, I think most everybody up here was, was down there at one point or another. And so I really appreciate that and I think it was a great event and great weather. And so thank you for that. I also wanted to announce I'm missing opening night, or I guess it just wrapped up. Opening night of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory at Oregon City High School, which runs through the weekend and there'll actually be two performances on Saturday. I don't know, in the 15 or so years that I've been connected to the high school, I don't know of a time that they've done a matinee. And so Saturday at 2:00, you can watch the show as well, so that's really exciting. And I think that that's it. I just wanted to make one, I guess, one more thing. I was so excited to see the proclamation for Preserve America and also the fact that we've acknowledged Historic Preservation Month for May. I think this is one of the, the most important things that, that we need to work on a little, you know, we wouldn't- you know, we need to work on in Oregon City. It's something that is really important to me personally. I think the changes that we're doing with the code amendments, I remember standing at 7-Eleven with Claire, watching the building across the street burn, and thinking, I hope we're protecting some of these buildings. And, you know, we've lost some great buildings. The Liberty Theater comes to mind and other buildings. And I hope that when we make these proclamations, we also hold ourselves accountable as a city to really do what we're saying and really step it up. And, you know, we own several buildings that are historic in themselves that I think we really need to realize that we need to do a better job ourselves, especially when we're publicly stating so much that this is important. And so I think we're doing some amazing things in terms of what we've done with the elevator and the promenade and the bridge and all of these things coming up. And so I think we just need to keep striving to protect these places in Oregon City. Because this is an amazing place.
I second that. Anyone else? Let me go first? Okay, a couple, several things. First of all, Oregon City has an entry in the Rose Festival Grand Floral Parade this year on June the 6th. I believe Dr. John McLaughlin, the father of Oregon and founder of Oregon City, will be there, as well as about 30 other costumed characters with our trolley. So we were, are guests of the Rose Festival Association. And so watch for that when you go to the Grand Floral Parade at 10:00 a.m. on June 6th. Secondly...
I was just going to say, I found out from John Salisbury that I will be Sam Barlow.
Oh, great. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Barlow.
We've got, I think it's kind of exciting.
Are you going to try to charge people that go on the trolley?
Mine.
Well, you're a doctor, so if anyone gets hurt, why... Oh, no, Barlow wasn't a doctor, was he? No, he wasn't.
I'll give McLaughlin a percentage.
Entrepreneur. Okay. Next, Willamette Falls Hospital, as you know, is becoming Providence Willamette Falls. And they are going to have a public rollout of that merger. And that will be Tuesday, May 26th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Willamette Falls Hospital Education, Health Education Center. So you need to RSVP, because there is limited seating. So just call the hospital number, and they can sign you up for that. So you can get your questions answered if you have any about that merger and the role of Providence in our community. Secondly, I'm the mayor that meets, so I've been to a few meetings on your behalf. One of them, where we discussed the construction excise tax. So they've been talking to you about the construction excise tax was put into place on a point one, 0.12% of the cost of a construction project in the metro region. And we used that for, to do our two concept plans. And we have reserved money for our third concept plan. So we were a direct beneficiary. And there is also a wonderful map that you might want to look at, the Metro website, that shows where the money came from and who received it. So we are a recipient city. And for instance, the city of Portland is a donor city. They didn't get a penny back. But they were great, they're grateful to do it. And the purpose, they were glad to do it. The purpose of this is that it will sunset unless we, Metro proposes to the legislature to keep it as an exception. So that is the purpose of this committee. So the proposal that's going to the Metro Council is that we do keep it, but that the purpose will change from getting land ready inside the urban growth boundary to some other things. The main guiding principle will be that the applications will be weighed on the ability to achieve on-the-ground development or redevelopment outcomes. So the, one of the controversial pieces was, can, if you've already received money, can you apply again? And at IMPAC, the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, I voted strongly with the majority that a community ought to be able to apply again, because all applications ought to be weighed on their ability to achieve on-the-ground development or redevelopment, and let a committee decide. So there will be two, if this goes through, there will be two processes. So there will be two grant cycles, essentially. So there'll be one in 2010, and then there will be one in 2012. Because the reserves process will be finished by then, and there'll be probably new possibilities for applications. So that, we've been working on the fine points of that. You'll be hearing about whether that continues. But it is, it is another tool that the region can have together to help work on infrastructure and those barriers that prohibit redevelopment and development. So that's one. And then, secondly, I believe that Dan referred to the housing report. We've had the, we've had the urban, or the regional housing report, and the employment report just came out. And both of them said that we actually have enough residential land and enough employment land inside your current urban growth boundary up until about 2030. And the questions, though, that we will be wrestling with under the employment, I thought these were some interesting ones, so I'd just throw them out as food for thought and to let you know what you'll be wrestling with. So how do we balance local desires with regional perspectives? So for instance, everybody would like to be home to a solar industry. Perhaps no jurisdiction wants to be home to warehousing. So how do you balance that kind of employment? The other thing is, giving the impossibility of predicting how much large-scale manufacturing we need in the region and where it goes, there is difficulties, there will be difficulties in preserving large private parcels for industrial use, which is essentially the highest quality employment land. And landlords aren't going to be happy sitting on their land. You know, we've experienced that here in Oregon City also. So is employment land interchangeable, or are there specialized need for certain industries? For instance, is a car manufacturer more likely to locate on Swan Island or in the Columbia Corridor? Well, and high-tech companies, we know, tend to cluster together. That's why they're called clusters. So the, of course, we know that the problem here is that the employment in our region tends to swing either to downtown Portland or to the east side in the Hillsboro high-tech area. And we, of course, in Clackamas County, would like to have jobs close to our people. So then we talk about regional equity. So what strategies need to be put in place to ensure that industrial land remains industrial? As you know, we have changed some of our industrial land to commercial. So that's an issue in the region. How do we guarantee regionally that industrial land remains industrial land and that local jurisdictions aren't tempted to change it to commercial, which may be easier to locate? That's just sort of some highlights of that. Very interesting reports. I urge you to look at those on the Metro site. There's an executive summary, which is small, and a complete report, which is larger. Okay, we've also had, what did we do? I did that one. The reserves committee met on the regional level, and things are kind of heating up there. We, if we're talking about a tight urban growth boundary, which we are talking about, especially in the short term, that will, these are three probable results. There will be reduced housing choice, because when you tighten the UGB, that may reduce opportunity. There may be reduced affordability, consider Boulder, Colorado. And there may be greater displacement of minorities that live in affordable housing. And then what's the difference between density and overcrowding? It's another issue that we're kind of wrestling with on that level. The other thing that we were considering as we look at infrastructure is, and as we consider increasing density, it isn't necessarily cheaper to develop downtown because of the infrastructure needs. In fact, Dan, you had some interesting comments on the differing costs of infrastructure at our edge and in our downtown and in our north end.
Well, actually, the part was the construction cost of building. When you're in a two, three, four-story wood structure building for a multifamily, for example, the cost is relatively cheap. But to go to a higher, high-rise thing, anything over five stories that's steel construction, the costs go up so much that you, we don't have the land value in Oregon City to even have developers look at that as an option right now. And that's the only kind of development you're seeing in Portland.
And so...
I think the point was, is that we may have ideas for higher density, but it's not a market reality right now.
So I think a lot, as we go forward with reserves, both urban and rural, the market, the market realities, I think, are going to hit in some of these philosophical questions. You know, they're very present with us on the table. So that's where we are as the, I believe you're meeting tomorrow, next week?
Next week.
Next week, the local reserves committee will be meeting. And in fact, I believe I'm meeting with Councilor, County Commissioner Lehan tomorrow to talk about local, our local aspirations, and so she can get a better understanding of the map that we, that we put together. So I think that's, I think that's where I'm, I think those are a few of my meetings that I've been to recently. Did you want to update this morning's?
Oh, I can. Are you going, do you have anything? This morning, we met over in Westland for the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, the group of stakeholders along the Willamette River between Westland and Oregon City. And things are coming along nicely there, putting that together. The goal there is, well, maybe I shouldn't say, what did we discuss? A national scenic area versus a national heritage area? And the national heritage area looks like it will probably win out for designation and more realistic to obtain. So next, we'll have another meeting next month. We all have assignments, or I don't have any, but assignments to keep the process moving. And anything else you can add?
Well, I think just one of the assignments is that we're going to talk to Congresswoman Schrader, Kurt Schrader, about being our champion in Congress for trying to push this possibility through. And we'll also begin to have, we'll have a public rollout likely end of summer or in the fall so that we can begin to gather public feedback on some of the proposals. We also will have a, oh, you're all invited, in fact. Ooh, what's the date? June, we have a studio.
Oh, the studio, June 2nd.
From University of Oregon students on June 2nd, 1:30 to 4:00.
At the county in their facilities building.
In the, where elections, where elections is, county elections.
Five assessors.
So that will be a really great opportunity. And I will send, we'll send out a mass email inviting you all to that. So I think that's...
I have a couple more things.
Yes.
So we could add this with Commissioner Smith, what he was mentioning on for May being National Historic Preservation Month. This is just a really wonderful direction that the area is going in, I think. And the goals are to promote interpretation of our cultural and natural sites, education for the community recreation goals along this corridor, historic preservation, and economic development through tourism. So the, I have a couple other unrelated things. Monday, I can hardly believe it is Memorial Day. And at 10 o'clock, there's a ceremony up at the Oregon City Cemetery. ROTC is going to do their flag presentation, and Gardner Middle School Band will be playing. And I'm going to be able to, I'm giving a little, a short address. So I hope you can come join us on this very special day. One little piece of disappointing news for it this year, though, is we aren't going to get the flyover.
No flyover, oh.
So that's kind of disappointing. But we'll all be there. And please join us. I also wanted to comment, or give Chief Conrad a compliment, that I can see that the police department's going in some new directions that are positive. And so it's really fun to, I can feel your work, and your presence changing things in Oregon City. A little bit on Main Street, we are in the process of doing our market analysis, which is so important to how downtown will redevelop or develop. And we have a short survey online on the Oregon City website. In fact, today, the county was a good partner, and they put it on their website, too. And they're sending it out internally to all their employees. But if you go to our Oregon City website, click on the survey. And what it's oriented to is, what kind of shopping opportunities would you like to have downtown? So I was thinking, I'm not going to share any of my personal shopping stories. I could be a shopping expert. If we could make the case.
You know, they do pay secret shoppers.
Okay. So I think that's it for me for tonight.
Chief, I think you have an announcement, don't you? Don't you have a community meeting coming up?
It's Wednesday.
Yeah. If it's Wednesday, it might be...
It is Meet Your Police, Wednesday, May 27th, 7:00 here in the commission chambers. We're having Detective Nick Innis, who is one of our detectives assigned to the inter-agency drug task force. And he's going to be talking about myths and realities of drugs in Oregon City.
Right. Thank you.
And I'd also like to say that it is nice to hear complimentary things. I happen to be the person up here that receives the compliments. The people who are really doing the real work out there, those police officers who drive around every day and drive those patrol cars, answer calls for service. So the real credit goes to them. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And on that positive note, we are adjourned.